At this time, I'd like to reconvene the Norco City Council and Successor Agency Meeting to our public session. At this time, we will take a report of actions taken in closed session.
The council considered the matters listed on the agenda, and there are no reportable actions.
Thank you. At this time, please join us as Mayor Pro Tem Berwin Hanna leads us in the salute to our flag.
(Inaudible)
And if you'll please remain standing, I'd like to call Bishop Presedio up to the podium for our invocation.
Dear Father in heaven, we are grateful to be here as a committee, as a community at large here for the city of Norco. We're grateful for the many blessings thou has given us, for this wonderful country that we are a part of, for the veterans, and for all the military servicemen who have fought for us and who have valiantly taken their lives on our behalf for the freedom that we enjoy today. We're grateful for the members that are serving on our council, and our mayor, and the leadership of this city, and we ask a special blessing upon them. A blessing for the stewardship that they take upon themselves, for the sacrifice they do with their time. We ask a special blessing upon the residents of the city of Norco as well, that they may prosper this coming new year, in the 2019. They may have the ability and the opportunity to serve one another in this community as well. We're grateful for all that thou has given us, dear Father, grateful for thy son, even Jesus Christ. And we, again, ask a special blessing upon this meeting, that as we discuss the affairs and the needs of this community, that we'll be able to be cognizant and mindful of those members that are in need, and for the specific things that we are looking to accomplish, and that we become good stewards of the things that we're responsible for. We're grateful for all these things, and say this humbly, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
At this time, we will move on to the business appreciation honoree, and I would like our EDAC Chair, Scott DeRosa, to join me at the podium to present our business appreciation to Rarin to Go Corrals.
If I can invite Randy and Michelle Maroni up front. My name is Scott DeRosa, and I'm Norco's Economic Development Advisory Council Chair. I'm here to assist Mayor Graham Meyer with the presentation of this month's Business Appreciation Award being presented to Rarin to Go Corrals. Located in the heart of downtown Norco, where they have parking not only for your vehicle, but for your horse as well, Rarin to Go has been a part of Horsetown USA since 2001. Rarin to Go loved being innovative and was passionate about providing quality trailers to our local community and beyond. During the economic challenges of 2008 and 2009, it was decided to go ahead and take a break for about a year and re-strategize. Rarin to Go opened again by selling a few trailers. As business improved, and as Randy listened to the demands of his customers, he started selling more livestock items such as horse corrals, hog and sheep pens, feeders, stall covers, et cetera. Unfortunately, all of his new merchandise that he was selling was having to be outsourced. In order to keep with their motto of selling top-quality merchandise, Randy began manufacturing some of his own products around 2015. With the exception of saddle racks, feeders, and mats, Rarin to Go now manufactures everything that they sell. So, if you've just heard, so as you just heard, Rarin to Go has been doing, or was doing quite well in their early years. But they fell down, like many other businesses, during the Great Recession. However, they picked themselves back up, rested off their knees, and they are back, better and bigger than ever before. So, it's my pleasure to assist in honoring Rarin to Go Corrals for their great customer service to our community, for their loyalty to Norco, and for being another inspiring story to all of us to learn about. Congratulations to Randy and Michelle Maroni of Rarin to Go. As Mayor Graham Meyer goes ahead and presents him with the award, I'm going to read what the plaque says. "The city of Norco hereby honors Rarin to Go Corrals for its 17 years of service to Norcadians, constantly evolving to meet the community's changing needs, yet steadfastly committed to traditions of Horsetown USA." Congratulations.
We definitely want to thank all of you for allowing us to be part of your dream and your equestrian needs, and your corrals and your covers. Also, we want to thank you for being part of our dream, and that is to do corrals in barns. And we want to say thank you again for that, and it's been a pleasure doing business all in Norcadians and everybody in Empire. And we're so proud that we can manufacture our own corral panels and covers, and allow to keep our prices down and be a family-operated business. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Micro Division One Cougar Championship Team. And so, at this time, I'd like to call Councilman Bash, and myself, you, and Mr. Petrie to help present the awards.
Well, my remarks are going to be brief, except to hand out the certificates, but I have to say, to get to the point where this team got is absolutely amazing. I had one coach tell me it's like herding a group of cats with a string to put it through the eye of a needle. And they actually did. We actually had two teams get that far. This team was victorious, the other one. I mean, just to get that far is absolutely amazing. So, unless you want to say something, Brian? Let's bring them forward.
Yeah. Why don't we, Coach, come in. President of the league, where are you at? Come on. I want you to be part of this. Being a former coach in Jaff, and understanding all the hard work it takes, and really from the parents, and I wanted just to say, thank you, parents, for being supportive of the coaches and the program, because it takes a lot. It takes that whole village to get to this point, and I just have to say, congratulations to all of you for your hard work. And these kids, these are the memories that they are making now, that they'll remember forever, and going on as they move up into high school and continue playing for the Cougars. So, congratulations to everyone.
Coach.
Yes, sir.
Just have a couple of words, and maybe introduce your players, and we'll hand these out one at a time. Bring them up.
Okay.
Do you want to say something first?
Well, yeah, sure.
Tell us how you did.
Well, we obviously had a successful year. That's why we're standing here. I think an important fact is that at least two of the coaches, Coach Schneider and myself, Coach Black, we both grew up in Norco. We both played Little League, and we played football at Wayne Macon. We both graduated from Norco High in 1998, so we're Norco boys through and through. And it's a pleasure for us to have these boys on our fields, doing the same thing that we did growing up. And, you know, we kind of grew up in the stands, watching the Norco football teams of the early 90s, frankly, whipping everybody's butt. And we're bringing back their tradition, so to speak. So, this is the first Division One championship that Norco Jaff has brought home, and I believe over 10 years. And we emphatically kicked everybody's butt. So, we finished, we finished the last two games not allowing a touchdown. And prior to that, the last two years, we actually were in the Super Bowl and lost both times. So, for sure, our players were especially hungry, and really, I don't think anyone was going to beat them this year, no matter what, because they worked harder than you can imagine 10-year-olds could work. We started the season kind of trying to come up with little, like, maybe games or obstacle courses to get them to work as hard, because it's hard to motivate 9- and 10-year-olds to work, but they kind of just let us know by their effort, hey, coaches, we don't need the games. We're here to work. We're here to do the job. And, man, they sure did it. They did a great job this year, and we are super proud of them. So, thank you, guys, for having us.
You want to help hand these out, and I'll hand these?
Okay. So, we're going to bring forward Ruben Aguilar.
Shake hands.
I'll shake hands.
Oh, not here? Okay. Christopher Bedeman?
Yes, sir.
Taven Black, who's not here? Is Preston coming up? There you go, buddy. Josiah Cook?
If you can remember, maybe their position.
Okay. Parker Colvin, our tailback. Brody Doussnap, he's a 9-year-old for us. On a 9- and 10-team, he's a two-way starter. Santiago Estrada, one of our fearsome foursome D. linemen. Liam Heasley, he played cornerback for us. He's a first-year player, and he did a bang-up job. I wish he would continue playing football. We'll see if that happens. Matthew Oares, one of our defensive linemen. Cade Chemnitz, one of our cornerbacks and also linemen. Dallas Lair, tight end slash fullback slash defensive lineman. Landon McCray is our middle linebacker and our blocking fullback, and this guy laid out more kids than you could imagine this year. I promise you that. Andrew Olson, he played offensive line and was our kicker. Cash Farhagi, outside linebacker and tight end. Riley Sheppman, wide receiver, cornerback. Logan Schneider, wide receiver and outside linebacker. Trevor Schneider, inside linebacker and quarterback. Landon Stavill, believe it or not, the lightest player on our team who also played center. Cameron Steubner, defensive end and offensive lineman. Jonathan Washington, defensive line, offensive line. I don't have the list of names, but our cheer squad's here, representing for us, who's always, always there for us. Thank you, ladies. And then have the coaching staff. So, like I said, I'm Brayden Black. Let me introduce David Schneider, who is our offensive coordinator. Tim's not here, is he? Tim Olson, who was our defensive line coach slash coordinator. Tyler Roberts, who also isn't here, and he was our defensive and offensive line coach. And Duffy Finley, who was a defense and offensive line coach and kept all of our stats for the I don't think the ladies are going to want to come up, but Shauna Stavill, our head A.D., who keeps us all in line. I'll just hold these. Shannon Schneider, who's our team mom, and, you know, deals with all of our problems from top to bottom. We appreciate you. Shara Olson is assistant team mom and assistant A.D., who was a big help all year. We appreciate your help, too.
Great. Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
Way to go. You know, out front, for a picture. The kids, the little kids.
Thank you.
Go ahead and get out there. Go ahead and get out here in line up. The girls in front of the boys, boys in a line facing that way. Start to go to the left. Start to go to the left. Yep. Girls in front. You guys go in front. The shorter boys in front.
And the girls next to the shorter boys.
Go in front.
I'm taller than all the boys.
Yeah, good to see you, too. Yeah. My grandson, this is my son-in-law. My grandson's away, but he's still there.
See you back in the youth program.
Yeah, we're not going, we're sticking around.
Okay, everybody put the awards down and take a picture.
Let's give them one. Norco on three. Round and six. One, two, three. Norco! Four, five, six. Family! Ah!
Yeah, we did. Boys did great. They aged really good. Played Chino Hills 19 to nothing, and then we played Moreno Valley. We barely beat them in the season, but we did 3-4 to them. Pretty good way to go.
See you guys later. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. For all you do.
Good to see you. Merry Christmas, and God bless. I'm going to be around for a while. All right, good.
So, Madam Mayor, I'll let people know that Ted and I played football at Norco pre-Civil War with a goat bladder. He didn't win any games, but we won two.
I'm sure that will be recorded in the minutes. Thank you, Councilman Bash. All right. We're going to skip ahead on the agenda just for a little bit. So, at this time, I am going to join Glenda at the podium to present our Waste Management
Good evening, everyone. As the mayor said, my name is Glenda Chavez, and I'm with Waste Management. Every year, the city of Norco and Waste Management recognizes three customers as our recycling all-stars for their extraordinary recycling efforts. These individuals and businesses are selected by their drivers, so it's really them who see exactly what they're doing and what they're doing right. So, we would like to recognize them every year to promote the importance of recycling and to ensure that we are doing it properly. So, I have confirmation that everyone is here. So, is Jerry Simmons here? No? Browning Dodge? Well, I do know that Dr. Kendra's here. So, Dr. Kendra is a business, but she does carts. And so, one of the things that we tend to think is that a commercial business only has to have a commercial bin, but we do have a lot of customers who do have cart service, and we wanted to recognize you, Dr. Kendra, tonight on behalf of Waste Management and the city of Norco. We do thank you for your recycling commitment and making sure that the city of Norco continues to do the right thing. So, could you come up and receive your award? You don't have to say anything, but if you do, I want to... So, this is on behalf of Waste Management.
So, thank you for recycling and valued member of our community.
I have a wonderful...
Definitely yours.
Oh, the duck truck.
Yeah. So, thank you so much.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. And even though the other recipients couldn't make it, we will make sure that they get
So, our other recognition, the family's not here yet, so we will move ahead to the presentation. So, at this time, I would like to introduce to you Riverside County Sheriff Stan Sniff to come speak with the residents.
Well, Mayor and council members and community members, thanks so much for inviting me here once again. I almost feel a part of your community. I've been over here back and forth so many times over the last 11 years and 3 months. I've served as 13th sheriff of Riverside County. And as you know, I'm ending my 43-year law enforcement career, starting on the city police department, and then climbing the ranks, the Riverside County Sheriff's Department, and then being selected in 2007 to fill a vacancy, and then standing election the next couple elections after that. So, it's been my honor to serve as the chief law enforcement officer for the county. It's been my honor to spend all the time. I hope I get to spend some more time, even in retirement. When you do the celebration of the American Cowboy every July, I look forward to being involved in the shootouts with all the bad guys back and forth, including some of them that are up on the dais here. But they do very well, and I'll attest to their, some of their skills on throwing the cowchips. So, even though I used to tease some of them, that's not something that you want to win. So, I purposely tried to not win those things in the early years, but with all seriousness, I wish the entire community a wonderful holiday season. It's been a great partnership with the Riverside County Sheriff's Department. The men and women that serve in your community, as all of you know, and I'm singing to the choir here, are first-rate in the Riverside County Sheriff's Department, and you've been well-served. And like I spoke before on a couple of the sessions, when you're talking about some of the proposed taxes over the years, they're really a very, very cost-effective way of policing the city. And again, I know I'm singing to the choir, but I couldn't be prouder of the Riverside County Sheriff's Department. As I leave at the end of the month, great body. It's been a great career for me and a great run, and it's been my honor to serve all of you in this community and all the other 27 communities in the unincorporated area for one of our most populous counties in the United States, the 10th most populous county, if you can believe that, for a kid that grew up out in the Coachella Valley, out in the desert. And when I first came to the sheriff's office, there was probably 600,000 population lock stock and barrel, and look at us today, 2.4 million and still growing, which is both good and bad, a lot of demand on public services. But thank you for all your support, and thank you for the great partnership you've had with the Riverside County Sheriff's Department and us with you, and happy holidays.
Would any members of council like to say anything?
Uh-oh, I'm in trouble now.
Go ahead and start.
Where's it coming from? Which side?
Start with Berwin, then.
Start with Berwin.
Thank you, Sheriff. I want to thank you very much for all the support you've given Norco and your friendship through the years. I think I got acquainted with you the first year I was elected, and we've had a lot of fun times and good breakfast and...
Yeah, at Polly's.
Yeah, Polly's and stuff like that, and everything. But I consider you a good friend, and I feel like you've done us a good job, and you've always furnished, you've always made sure that Norco had the leadership in the law enforcement over here that fits our town, our lifestyle, and keep in touch. Thank you.
Will do.
Well, Stan, as someone that used to work for you for several years, I appreciate everything you have done for our city in your term of office. The guys that are working there are direct reflection of your standards, and we appreciate everything you have, and you take care of our city. So, like I said, I've had the honor of working for you, and I truly believe it was an honor. Thanks. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Well, I've always been really proud to say you're our sheriff. I think you've taken care of Norco. Obviously, we get the cream of the crop in terms of deputies. Not that all deputies aren't great, but two-time deputy of the year in the city of Norco. Dan back there has been stellar. It seems like we have great captains. And what I enjoyed most about you, one, was I was proud to call you our sheriff, but also, you were here all the time, and I really, really appreciate that. And in my opinion, you're going to be missed greatly. So, thank you for everything you did for every resident of the city of Norco.
Thank you.
I'm going to miss you, Stan. You've been a good friend to us, and like Berwin, I always look forward to our annual breakfast meetings, and I certainly would like to see that continue. Kevin and I are going to retire this next year from Day of Cowboy with cowchips. So, you will have to pick up the slack.
Or the cowchip.
Or the cowchip, right.
Or toss it.
To comment on the staff, that you've always watched over us, and I feel that you've always given us the best. And I think Captain Dan in the back can attest to that also, that we're proud of all your staff, and certainly the deputies that you have provided to us.
Well, you've been well-served, as I've mentioned, and not only the commanders of the station during my tenure and even before that, because I was an assistant sheriff and a chief deputy for a number of years, and oversaw much of the patrol operations on both the west end and across the county. And we've always tried to ensure that we've got the best quality people serving in the communities out there on the west end of the county, and particularly in Norco. I can't slight any of the other cities, because we try to end up having great staff in all of them. But as I said earlier, I can't be any prouder of the Riverside County Sheriff's Department. And as you all know, we had a tough drawdown on fiscally over the last few years. It's rebounded a little bit this current fiscal year now, but it was really tough. It didn't impact each, any of our partner cities as much as it impacted the unincorporated area, but it was a heck of a drawdown, and we lost about 15 percent of our end strength, plummeted in about two years.
in about two years. And I hope that the fiscal challenges the counties had, you know, I've got to make noise on your behalf and on behalf of the rest of the constituents that I serve, all 2.4. And so that sometimes led to battles with the Board of Supervisors, but as all of you know, the sheriff does not work for the Board of Supervisors, but I do depend on them to put money in my tin cup to run the operation. And they had some really tough challenges over the last of probably three or four years. And every public safety department, not just the sheriff, the DA, probation department, even the public defender, were all adversely impacted by the drawdown. But it is what it is, and it's important for all of us to be good managers. And my job is, once I'm dealt with those cuts, to end up doing them responsibly and rebalancing my budget, just like you would expect of all your department heads if you have to do cuts. And that's exactly what we did, but it was a tough one for the last couple of years. So thank you.
And Sheriff, I'd just like to say, as somebody that was newly elected a few years ago, the Sheriff's Department was one of the first to reach out to me and welcome me and show me the way that the department worked and help me to understand the department. And our local deputies have allowed me to tag along on a few homeless operations, which I appreciate. And so thank you for your leadership and providing us with some really amazing deputies in the City of Norco. So we appreciate that very much.
Well, thank you all, and again, happy holidays to everybody and be safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, yeah. Sheriff Sniff, hold on, we have a plaque for you, and I'd like council to join me down at the podium for our... Yeah, it's my first real meeting tonight.
You're doing good. Go on. Nice hat there. Thank you again. Thank you all.
And thank all of you.
Still no? All right. So we will proceed with the agenda. If they show up later, can we... Adam, all right, perfect. Thank you. I thank you, everyone, for your patience as I get familiar with running a meeting. The first item on our regular agenda is city council communications and reports on regional boards, so we will start with Councilman Hannah.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's see. Mundy attended the blue light ceremony over at the county building with Councilman Hoffman, Councilman Newton, and Mayor Grunmeyer. And what that is, is law enforcement honors all the fallen officers in Riverside County, and I believe the first one was in 1893, up to a couple of years ago. But there's quite a deal. The families, some of the families show up and they honor them and give them a bouquet and everything, and they pass out the little blue lights and everything. It's a real moving ceremony. And then yesterday, attended the summit over at Silver Lakes, and that's with RJ's investors to tell what they've done the year before and what they're going to do next year and what they did this past year. They had told us last year they were going to do it, but they did that plus more. And 2019 is going to be a really big year. They've got lots of events planned and everything, so it's getting pretty exciting. And with the Vector Board, tomorrow will be Major Dillon's last day. He's retiring as the Director and Manager of the District, Northwest Mesquite District, and he's been there for almost 40 years, I believe. And Bill Van Dyke, who's spoken here before about Vector and Mesquitas, he'll be taking over as the new manager. There was RCTC last week, and you probably read it in the paper. We approved the construction of a new lane, which is about 2.2 miles long, from the Green River on route westbound to the 241 Toll Road. That's where they have a big jam up every day. And a group of people, a group of residents in Corona and south of there formed an alliance, and they've been coming to meetings and jumping up and down. And so last week, we approved the new lane, and they were all happy until they heard it's going to be about three years because of the environmental, the environmental they did on the construction that just finished last year. It's already run out, so they've got to do another one, so it takes a while to do all of that. And speaking of the Green River, well, they've tried everything in the world to speed the traffic up over there, and there's two lanes, two lights, two green lights, two red lights that lets you go one car at a time. Well, two months ago, we decided to let them turn the lights both to green at the same time and two cars go at once. They tried it for a week, and the drivers would not do it. It was a failure, just because the drivers couldn't get it in their head that you can go at the same time as the next guy, so they put the lights back like they were. RTA, I was elected Second Vice Chair of that commission for the upcoming year, but they have their 25-cent ride going on right now for students. I think it goes till the middle of January, and students from kindergarten through grade 12, if you have your ID and your student ID card, you ride anywhere 24, so that you want to, for 25 cents each way. And they've done this for the last several years. They do it in the summertime, which increases ridership during that period immensely. But they said the first weekend this time, which was two weeks ago, that they had to add some extra buses on the weekend, especially to Disneyland, with all the kids going to Disneyland, because I don't know where else you could go for 25 cents each way and everything. But they're all happy about that. With the NART team, last year, we were honored to go to the Equifest at, oh, Equestrian Centers, everybody knows what that is. It's all the horses that perform, that ride in the Rose Parade. They got to go there a few days before and perform in their own national TV, so they had us there, standing by with our horse ambulance. And some of the team is going again on the 29th to stand by again. They called us back, and then they called us this morning, I was in there talking to Brian, the, one of the chairman for the parade committee, the Rose Parade, calls us and wants us there on New Year's Day as one of the standby horse ambulances in the parade, so there'll be some of us going down there. We think that's quite an honor. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Hoffman.
Well, I too attended the Blue Light special, like Berwin said, but let me, I was also at the summit, and he really did abbreviation on that. Besides soccer, they're going to have two big, they're going to have an international soccer tournament in the summer, along with a national summer, underage, for younger kids, also in the summer, big soccer tournaments. These are people from all over the country. The international brings in teams from Germany, so it's pretty exciting to have them come here during the summertime. But new sports over there, they hooked up with the Corning Norco Unified Schools District, especially Roosevelt High School, rugby team, lacrosse, the high school teams be playing over there, so that's pretty exciting. They've also figured out that Norco College has a soccer team that was like no wins. They finally won a game through the tutelage from the teams over at Silver Lakes. But the exciting news is they've hooked up with the Tailgate Concert Series, and if you heard about it last year, they held it in August. It was at Staples Centers. It's going to be at Silver Lakes in August of this year, of 2019. So I'm pretty excited about that, so I know Berwin skimmed over that, but I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Bash.
Well, I didn't attend the Blue Light. I actually attended an amazing birthday party for a man 101-years-old who fought with the 1st Marine Division from Guadalcanal all the way through several conflicts in the Korean War. And for a guy that old, he was amazing. He went to high school, junior high school, at the Sherman Institute. So he's a local, local boy, and he fought in nine major campaigns. I mean, amazing. I went to a lot of meetings, but I want to just make the council aware, there's a couple of things that, first off, Ted and I are now part of the League of Cities Rural Cities Community Committee, and we'll be talking more about that. But essentially, what that is, is we belong to a statewide group of cities that look to protect our rural lifestyle. One of the things that is happening more and more is that we're all kind of having to step out, help protect ourselves, and link with other communities that have like problems, so I'm looking forward to that. We had our first meeting, oh, just a couple of, it was a phone meeting, and then four times a year, I've accepted a position to go to Sacramento with the League of Cities Community Services Policy Committee, and that deals with parks, trails, things like that, and hopefully we'll be able to make some impacts in terms of getting funding and different things to help support our lifestyle, which is basically a recreation-based city. So I'll be going there four times a year, and then there's another committee that I've asked me to be part of, but I got to see if I can work it into my schedule. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Councilman Newton.
Yes, you did. It's all right. I'm new. It's okay.
And it was good, it was good last time.
I guess it's my night to watch you, so. Good evening. A couple of Thursdays ago, I attended the Chino Basin Desalter Board Meeting. I have completed my year as Chairman, so I'm looking forward to not doing that anymore. We're still continuing on with our interim general manager search, and next month, we will be interviewing four candidates to see if we're going to stay with a temporary general manager or go ahead and hire a full-time general manager. And then just a short update on the product water pipeline going across the Santa Ana River, that it's still on schedule to start in January with completion in March. But just one of the, throughout my own little political rant on why, you know, when you ask, why is water expensive, why is this cost, that cost in 2016? And this is not a big project. We had to pay California Fish and Wildlife $220,000 payment for mitigation of potential mitigation by going across the river. Upon our final design, which just only impacts a third of an acre of the riverbed, they came back and wanted another $80,000 in mitigation fees. So you look at that and you go $300,000, you know, overall for, to impact a third of an acre that you're going 40 feet underneath the surface, gets frustrating. And maybe give us a little insight how insane it gets when you deal with these regional boards. So that's all I have to say about that.
I apologize. I wanted to thank the community. If you went to the December 7th, which I think all council did, and Robyn Spied the Flowers, our Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day was terrific, standing room only. Melissa Melendez gave an amazing speech. In fact, I thought everybody was top-notch. And the singer, Shante, was just incredible, and I got tons of emails thanking the City of Norco, thanking everybody who put that on, so it was a great success. Thank you.
All right, and I have nothing to report. So item number two, city consent, city council consent items. All items listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and may be enacted by one motion. Prior to the motion to consider any action by the council, any public comments on any of the consent items will be heard. There will be no separate action unless members of the council or the audience request specific items be removed from the consent calendar. Items removed from the consent calendar will be separately considered under item number three of the agenda. And with that being said, on item 2D, there was an adjustment for the Riverside County City Selection Committee assignment. That assignment goes to the mayor, so I have been changed to that. And then the alternate is Mayor Protem Hannah. The other item of note is on item 2E. We did correct the construction dates so that those are reflected to, say, 2019. So with that, are there any items that need to be pulled? Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar. Councilmembers Newton, Bash, Hoffman, Mayor Protem Hannah, Mayor Grunmeyer. Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. So we will move into public comments. This is the time when persons in the audience wishing to address the city council regarding matters not on the agenda may speak. Please complete the speaker card in the back of the room and present it to the city clerk so that you may be recognized. The Ralph M. Brown Act limits the city council's ability to respond to comments on non-agendized matters. At the time such comments are made, the city council shall not discuss or take action relative to any general public comment. Jim Pollard. You're good now. Sorry.
Okay, Mayor. Well, congratulations, Mayor Grunmeyer.
Thank you, sir.
And I just want to wish everybody in the community and the staff Merry Christmas in the city that I can do that, and thank you for the privilege of coming up here before you in the last year and presenting some of the issues that I've had and the issues that represent the city and I'm proud to be part of. On a lighter side, Chad was winner of the ugly sweater contest yesterday, and I can just imagine what that looked like with maybe construction zones flashers and LED stop sign or detour sign on it, but it was a pleasure that the city can have that opportunity to be, get together. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Cahan.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Since Jim put us in the Christmas mood, I'm here to recognize my committee for the 2018 Christmas Festival and Parade of Lights. Another wonderful event. Want to thank you for your support. Want to thank you for your continued participation in the parade and the festivities. Just to remind everybody, this is a committee. There's a few staff people who work very hard. Michelle England, Crystal Foster, Alejandra, and Jamie, and Hank, they work hard. Their staff, they still do a wonderful job. We have a handful of volunteers that spend their time and their energies helping this community. Kathy Burt's here tonight. She helps out with our vendors and organizing all the vendors that we have up at the festival. And one of her helpers with the vendors is also Kathy Kramer and her husband, Don Kramer, who are fans... who are fantastic volunteers besides everything else they do in town for Horse Week and the fair and the veterans and, I can't even, rural and everything else they do. They bust their butts on this committee to make sure that things get decorated, that the vendors are in order. They help run the Santa, pictures with Santa Station up at Nellie Weaver. So I just want to recognize the Kramers and Kathy Burt, and also Fed Overstreet, who has run the parade for 14 years, had to step aside with her illness. And Katie Cover came in and took over running the parade, and she did a fantastic job. And so, these volunteers need to be recognized. And I just wanted to come up here and say their names so people know that these people take the time. They come to meetings literally all year long. We're going to take a couple of weeks off for the new year, but in January, we already start up again. We do a recap of this year's parade and festival, and we already start working on 2019. So it's an all-year event. And again, thank you to those volunteers. Thank you to the hard-working staff. Brian, you have the hardest-working staff, and I appreciate them so much. And again, for your support. So thank you for making the Christmas Festival and Parade of Lights another success. Thank you.
Thank you. Sergeant Akoff?
Mayor, council, staff, people behind me, I am a proud member of the Veterans Committee in Norco, and I'm here to make my last pitch. As you can see, buy a brick, and buy a brick. For that last-minute Christmas gift for that veteran in your family, in your life, the bricks go to support the Veterans Memorial at George Ingalls Veterans Memorial in the Circle of Honor. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer any questions. And I'm, or you can call Parks and Recs. Julie over there, all the people over there are great in Parks and Recs. Brian, too, will help you out to buy a brick. I'm really excited tonight. Anytime in this, the small group that we have here, I made contact with a proud Marine mom of Lance Corporal Damon Witt, who is in, serving in Yuma, Arizona, at the airbase there. He's a Marine, and hopefully, he will have a brick pretty soon. So I've done my job. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, that concludes public comments. Thank you. All right. So now, city council successor agency discussion action items. First item this evening is bond proceeds expenditure agreement between the successor agency to the Norco Community Redevelopment Agency and the City of Norco. And we have Gina.
Good evening, Mayor, Chair, and members of the City Council and Successor Agency Staff is recommending that the Successor Agency Board adopts Resolution Number 2018-02 approving the form of a bond proceeds expenditure agreement between the successor agency and the City of Norco, as well as the city council adopting Resolution 2018-68 approving the form of a bond proceeds expenditure agreement between the successor agency and the City of Norco. Brief background on this, the successor agency to the City, to the Norco Community Redevelopment Agency has approximately 291,000 in unspent proceeds of the former Norco Redevelopment Agency's tax allocation bonds. The Redevelopment Dissolution Act allows the successor agency to spend these bond proceeds for the purposes for which the bonds were issued. The city and successor agency propose to enter into a bond proceeds expenditure agreement in substantially the form submitted to provide for the successor agency to transfer current and future excess bond proceeds by the successor agency to the city, and the city to spend such proceeds consistent with applicable bond covenants. The successor agency and the city intend for the use, city to use excess bond proceeds for the following purposes. However, the city will have discretion under the agreement to use the excess bond proceeds for any purpose for which the bonds were issued, subject to compliance with all applicable bond covenants. The two areas that we're looking at for the project money are improvements to Norco Sheriff's Substation at City Hall. This project includes security consisting of software, lighting, cameras, counter-improvements, and signage improvements, as well as landscaping and other improvements to the north end of River Road. This project will include tree planting, ground cover, irrigation, and other improvements. And staff is available for any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you. Does council have any questions?
I do.
All right. Councilman Newton?
Good evening, Gina. The improvements that, on River Road, the landscaping, that, that had been brought up to us previously. And along with the sheriff's substation, we're not married to these two projects, are we? As long as we meet certain criteria?
Correct.
Okay. Because one thing I wanted to suggest was, along with the substation and counter-improvements and different security, was comments that Councilmember Hanna made at the last meeting about security improvements within City Hall. So I would just like to see part of that added into, along with the sheriff's station And then, once we develop a cost, then does it have to go to the Department of Finance for approval?
We have.
Or do they give us the, here's $200,000?
Pretty much, this document indicates that we can spend it on projects consistent with the bond proceeds agreement. So it's fairly capital improvement projects such as that. So it's, we can change the theme of it, if you'd like. The funds will not be available until July 1st.
Correct.
Of next year. And again, it goes to the county for approval first, as our new oversight board, and then to the DOF.
Thank you, Gina.
Councilman Hoffman?
Well, I have the same question. And as you brought it up, it can be used for other things. So my understanding is the reason we had to submit those, because it was at the, almost the end of the year last year, when the county took it over, that they held up the approval. So you're saying that these two projects, essentially what we submitted, can, we don't have to adhere to that, then? It just doesn't make any sense to me to do it that way.
What we sent to them last year is no longer valid. So this is our new agreement. We discovered during that process, we had to come forward with a bond expenditure agreement to allow us to spend those bond proceeds. So we're basically doing administrative function with the DOF and the county oversight board to be able to spend those specific funds.
But you're just to spend the funds. So what you're saying is we don't need to spend it for these two projects, then? Or?
The agreement simply is an agreement to spend the bond proceeds. It doesn't designate any specific projects, simply that they have to comply with the bond covenants and the purposes for which the bonds were originally issued.
Well, I agree with Councilman Newton about increasing the security in the building area, too. I just, there was a specific reason why we wanted that landscaping there along River Roads. So I would hope that we kind of stay with this idea. All right. That's it.
Before there's any expenditure, you're going to get to revisit the bidding and the projects, anyway.
And that would be part of our annual capital improvement program.
Councilman Hanna?
Yeah, since we're talking about the improvements to the sheriff's substation and security, mine, you mentioned at the last meeting about upgrading the security in City Hall. And you gave a figure, but I don't remember how much that was.
The total project, including sheriffs in that, was going to run us close to about $150,000. The, where we are, the system that we have in the sheriff's department is, lived its life expectancy. Our server, all of our systems there can't be upgraded. We have to come back in with new systems. We're in the digital era, so everything has to be brought back to digital. And if you understand that part of our operations, there's a lot of sensitive areas there that are required, that we need to meet in order to maintain our substation. So that part of the funding, or a great part of this funding, will be used to meet that.
Okay, but part of the funding is going to be in the sheriff's department and then the other part of the city hall.
And then we would look at City Hall, which, part of, one of the, in our evaluation of security systems and upgrades, part of that also included cameras and identifica, and equipment that would provide us in the front, at all the lobbies, all of the counter areas. Those cameras and that digital system would also be available for review in the sheriff's office, once we're completed with the project.
But I'll remind you again, that that's not what's on the agenda. The agenda is simply an agreement to be able to expand funds for any purpose which qualifies. You're going to get to revisit all that stuff, including probably knowing Norco, other projects that you might want to consider as well.
I'll wait till the end of the meeting and bring up my question to finish this conversation, then, because I'm not going to let you forget it. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Then I will entertain a motion. Please remember that we do need two separate motions for this. One is the successor agency and one is the city council.
Motion to approve the first.
Okay. Board members Newton, Hoffman, Bash?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hanna?
Yes.
Chair Grunmeyer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion to approve the second.
Councilmembers Newton, Hoffman, Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hanna?
Yes.
Mayor Grunmeyer?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. We will move on to item 5B, approval of the recognized obligation payment schedule and administrative budget for the period of July 1, 2019, through June 30, 2020. And again, back to Gina.
Chair, members of the successor agency board, staff is recommending adoption of Resolution 2018-03 approving the recognized obligation payment schedule and administrative budget for the fiscal period of July 1, 2019, through June 30, 2020. The successor agency to the Norco Community Redevelopment Agency, or successor agency, was formed to administer the enforceable obligations and otherwise unwind the former affairs of the former Norco Community Redevelopment Agency, all subject to the review and approval by a seven-member oversight board. Until June 30, 2018, each successor agency had a local oversight board that served this purpose. As of July 1, 2018, all oversight boards have been replaced by consolidated county-wide oversight boards as part of the streamlining and wind down of redevelopment affairs. The ROPS 19-20 budget provides a list of eligible obligations to be paid by the successor agency from all funding sources, starting July 1, 2019, through June 30, 2020. The eligible obligations to be paid during this period consist of debt service payments required to be made on bonds issued by the former Norco Community Redevelopment Agency for itself and on behalf of Corona Norco Unified School District, minimum administrative cost allowance to be paid to the successor agency, reimbursement for the former ARDA's share of unfunded pension and post-retirement healthcare liabilities, CFD taxes on successor agency-owned parcels, parcel, and a CRAF loan repayment to the housing fund. The total amount of obligations requested for the period to be paid from redevelopment property tax trust fund for the year is $7,186,733.
All right. Does council have any questions?
Motion approved.
Is there a second?
No.
Okay. Board members Newton, Hoffman, Bash?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hanna?
Yes.
Chair Grunmeyer?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. Moving on to item C, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute agreements with the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration for implementation of a local transaction and use tax, and a resolution authorizing the examination of transactions and use tax records. And this will be a report by our city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As you indicated, this item deals with the implementation of cities' transactions and use tax ordinance, which was passed, this past November, as Measure R. The first resolution will authorize a city manager to execute two separate agreements with the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration. The first agreement to be executed is the agreement that allows the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration to do all the preparatory work that is required in order to implement Measure R. The second agreement is an agreement that would require them to do the ongoing administration of the, of Measure R transactions and use tax ordinance. Under the first agreement, which is the preparatory work, this will require the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration to notify, for example, all retailers that are in the City of Norco with respect to the change, the change in the tax rate. Similarly, they will be required to notify all other retailers that could be impacted as a result of this change in tax rate that do business outside of the City of Norco, specifically those who sell vehicles. The other work they will do under this agreement will be to develop the guidelines for their staff to implement these new taxes. Then, once those preparatory work has been completed, then the Department of Tax and Fee Administration will also undertake the ongoing administration of these new taxes. And for their services, they have estimated that the cost will be approximately $175,000. This will be a one-time cost. However, the actual cost that they will build a city will be dependent upon the actual amount that the department expands with respect to implementing the taxes on a statewide basis. If you noticed, there were plenty of cities in California, as well as special districts, that passed similar ordinances to increase their sales tax rate. So all of that cost will be combined and then allocated to the cities accordingly. With respect to the ongoing agreement for the implementation of the transactions and use tax, the estimated cost for that item is about 0.5% of the total revenues that are collected on an annual basis. Currently, we are estimating that the revenues to be generated from this tax measure is about $4.5 million annually. With that application of 0.5%, this translates into about $22,500 on an annual basis. The second resolution that the city council is being asked to approve is a resolution that authorizes the State Department of Tax and Fee Administration to grant access to certain employees and all functions in the city. For example, as, sales tax information is confidential, and in order to release that information, the city council force needs to adopt a resolution to identify those positions in the city that are allowed to have access to that. Similarly, this resolution authorizes outside representatives, such as our sales tax consultant, to have access to this, this data. And finally, this resolution grants the city manager the authority to designate in the future those positions and titles, as well as functions within the city that can have access to this, this information from the Department of Tax and Fee Administration. With that, I'll conclude my presentation and take any questions.
Council have any questions?
Andy, I have one. On $175,000, that's your, the total amount, right?
For the implementation of the preparatory work.
And, and only because you talked about other jurisdictions. So is that, it would go down based upon what you're saying about other jurisdictions?
No, the estimated amount applicable to the City of Norco is $175,000. However, again, this is an estimate. The total cost incurred by the department will be totaled, and then allocated to, to the jurisdictions that are implementing this tax based on the November elections. And again, the estimate of the city's share of that at this particular time is $175,000.
All right. Thank you.
Andy, on the, the estimated $22,000 administrative fee by the, by the state, that is for a add-on tax?
That's... That's correct.
Correct. Do we pay an administrative fee or percentage to the state for our general sales tax?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
And actually, the rate for that is slightly higher than 0.5%.
And what's that dollar amount approximately?
The rate is approximately 0.6%. Now, if our, we generate $7 million, that would be, what, about $42,000 about annually? And they deduct that from the, from the revenues collected before they send them to us.
And that, and that'll be the same with this approximate $22,000?
That's correct.
So our, our quarterly payment will, would that be proportionate?
Yes.
Okay.
It's based on the amount that is collected on a quarterly basis. Yes.
Thank you.
Does counsel have any other questions? So we can entertain one motion to recommend both actions.
Motion to approve both actions, 2018-69, 2018-70.
Thank you.
I'm going to try the voting system, see if it's working. Motion passes unanimously.
All right, so we are moving on to item 5D, verbal report on Measure R and discussion on the formation of the Citizens Oversight Committee, and this presentation will also be by our city manager.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor and members of the city council, Norco residents. This is a discussion regarding the formation of the Citizens Oversight Committee. This is a discussion item regarding the formation of the Citizens Oversight Committee relating to Measure R. As you know, earlier, earlier this evening, the city council certified the results of the election that was held last month, which, in which Measure R passed with nearly 56% of the votes. Part of the provision in the ordinance and in, in the structure of the measure was that we need to include a Citizens Oversight Committee to ensure transparency and accountability over the forms that are generated through Measure R. We'll be, I'll be going over certain various topics to guide our discussion this evening. The intent here is to generate some input from members of the public so that we can structure this committee with those input coming from Norco residents. But as a housekeeping matter, I do want to say this. As I go through the presentations, take notes and write down your questions, and I like the questions to be asked or the comments to be made after the presentation is complete. The reason for that is that some of the things I'm going to talk later on in the presentation may have answered the questions or comments that you have.
Mayor, just one second. I just want to make it, make the, the public aware, this is the first time we've seen this too. We haven't seen any of this presentation, so it's new to, at least me, I don't know about the rest of counsel.
Nobody else has seen it, yeah, except staff. Yeah, sure. So by way of introduction, as I said, this passed November 2018. The results of the Measure R election showed that it passed by 56%. Again, the purpose of this presentation and this discussion item is for the formation and, and to set the guidelines for a Citizens Oversight Committee, which will oversee Measure R spending while ensuring transparency and accountability for Measure R revenues and expenditures. First of all, we need to select a name for this committee, and at this particular point, staff is recommending that it be called Measure R Citizens Oversight Committee. In terms of the duties of the Oversight Committee, the, the most important duty of this committee is for members to attend and participate in committee meetings. The number two duty of this committee is to review any proposed use of Measure R revenues, prioritize those proposals, make necessary adjustments, and provide recommendations to the city council. Thirdly, the committee will be responsible for reviewing Measure R revenue and expenditure reports, which will be provided on a, on a periodic basis, and to provide feedback and recommend transmitting all of those reports to the city council. The number four duty of the committee is to review annual independent accountants' reports regarding Measure R revenues and expenditures, and then provide feedback to the city council. These are the duties that we, we have identified, they are not all inclusive. The members of the public, as well as the city council, can suggest additional duties that may be included as, as part of the duties of the, of the Citizens Oversight Committee. One thing we do need to note here is the Citizens Oversight Committee is an advisory body, and as such, its recommendations are not binding, they must be approved by the city council before implementation. Composition of the Citizens Oversight Committee, staff is recommending that the number of members to this committee not to exceed nine. The reason for that is, is from a practical standpoint, is to make decision-making a little easier and to, to manage the committee's process. In terms of how these members could be selected, there are options here, A, B, C. The first option is that members could be selected, selected at large, and that means members are pointed from a pool of citywide applicants. Another option could be to make specific selections from individuals that represent specific groups, interests, or organizations here in the city of Norco. And the third way that this can be done is to have a hybrid system where some members are appointed at large and other members are appointed based on their community group or interest affiliation. One of the things we also need to decide in terms of this Oversight Committee is the term of those who are appointed to serve on the committee. Should they have a fixed term? All members, for example, will serve for a two-year term, a three-year term, or a four-year term before their membership to that committee expires. We can also have a situation where appointment is staggered. In this situation, some members may serve two years, others may serve three years or four years. The reason you would do this is to ensure that at least all the members don't turn over at the same time. So if you had a three-year term where every member is appointed for a three-year term, then we could have a situation where all of them turn over at the same time. So we need to maintain some ability to preserve some, some experience on, on, on the, on the committee. The other should, the other issue we need to determine is if membership, members should have a limited term, and if so, how many terms or years should, should they be limited to serve? As currently structured, the ordinance under Measure R is, doesn't have a sunset clause. But if for some reason that the, the ordinance is terminated, then the Oversight Committee will automatically terminate 90 days after the end of the fiscal year in which Measure R revenues are expended. This is one of the things that was discussed at Lent during the Measure R process. How are the members going to be recruited? First of all, we need to talk about the qualifications. Again, these are most of the standard qualifications we have for anyone to serve on existing city council commissions or council. To be a member, that individual has to be a United States citizen, they must be a Norco resident, be at least 18 years of age, be a registered voter, not have been convicted of a felony, not be a member of a city commission or advisory council at a time of appointment. That means you cannot serve on two, on this and, and, and serve on another city council commission or advisory council concurrent. And of course, understand and comply with city rules, as well as committee rules and Selection process. What, again, this is an, an item that was discussed quite a bit during the, the process. What we are, these are the options. There is an initial screening option. That initial screening can be performed by a group that is appointed by the city council members, and that may include the city manager, community members, or civic leaders, or other individuals as the city council determines. The initial screening process can also be performed by the city's independent auditors, we currently have them, so there will be, if that is the, the preferred option, then they will do that initial screening process of, of applicants. It can also be performed by a professional screening firm or consultant, as the city and the community determines. Options A, B, and C will result in a shortlist of applicants. So, once we go through that initial screening process, a shortlist of applicants will be established, and then the city council will need to determine if it would prefer the option to review all qualified applicants, a minimum number of applicants to be shortlisted for appointment relative to the number of vacancies. City council appointment options. City council reviews third-party recommendations and selects applicants from the shortlist. One of the things the city council would need to do is to determine if a simple majority or a supermajority vote is required for appointment. Appointment made from a pool of third-party recommendations through a public lottery process. So one way of doing this, rather than having city council vote on who should go on this committee, would be, once a list, a shortlist is established, all those applicants who are in that shortlist that is established by a third party will be placed into a lottery pool, and, and, and members of the committee will be selected purely on a random basis from that pool that is in the lottery. Filling vacancies, the city council will need to determine if it would prefer to fill scheduled and unscheduled vacancies in the same manner as the, as the selected screening and appointment processes. So if, if a position becomes vacant, should those applicants go through the same screening process, or should the city council make a direct appointment without undertaking a In terms of what happens, recruitment is anticipated to begin on January 17, contingent of, on city council approval at its regular meeting on January 16 of a resolution. So tonight, we are going to be taking public input, and at the next city council meeting on January 16, we'll bring back a formal resolution for the city council to adopt. And once that resolution is adopted, then we'll begin the recruitment process. In terms of meetings of the Citizens Oversight Committee, we need to determine how often this committee will meet, but the first thing I do want to point out here, and we talked again about this when we were going through that process, is that the meetings of the Citizens, Citizens Oversight Committee will be a public and subject to the Brown Act. So that means, of course, residents, anyone can come and participate throughout those meetings. Frequency of meetings, that has yet to be established. It could be monthly, it could be bimonthly, it could be quarterly, it could vary depending on where we are in the process, or as the work schedule for the committee permits or demands. Day and time, the city council will need to determine if it would prefer to select the day and time the committee is required to meet, or allow the, those appointed members to, to select the day and time that is preferable to them. Meeting location will be dependent upon the day and time and, of course, availability of space. Roles. Third-party responsibilities, that the item that the city council approved before this item is, we need to understand that the administration of this tax, in terms of collecting the taxes and sending the money to the city, that is to be done by the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration. We also have a consultant who actually reviews the allocation that is, is sent to us, the detailed information from the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration database, and reviews those to make sure that the, the, the information is, is accurate and complete. And that is the HDL companies that monitors that information, as well as provides us customized management reports. The role of the city council, approving resolutions, rules, regulations that govern the Citizens Oversight Committee, determine the requirements, that is minimum number of votes to override recommendations of the city council Oversight Committee. Filling vacancies when and if a member can no longer serve on the committee, taking actions on recommendations from the Citizens Oversight Committee. And again, this may not be all-inclusive, but these are the ones we know for that are would be incorporated in the resolution. Staff. Responsibilities. The staff will be responsible for preparing agendas, sending out meeting notices, and preparing meeting minutes. Staff will be responsible for preparing a list of projects and programs, including justification and estimated cost to be funded by Measure R revenues. Keep in mind, those would need to go through a review by the Oversight Committee and be approved. But in terms of generating that initial list, that will be the, the role of, of staff. Preparing detailed revenue and expenditure schedules to be approved by the committee and transmitted to the city council. Ensuring that the annual independent audit requirements are met, and reports are issued and presented to the Citizens Oversight Committee. And of course, providing other assistance as necessary to the members of the Oversight In terms of what happens next, as I said, January 16, we'll be bringing back a resolution to this, a formal resolution to the city council to adopt, and once that is adopted, we will commence recruitment for members of the committee beginning January 17 and going through March 15. Measure R becomes effective on April 1, 2019, so the sales tax rate in the city of Norco will go from 7.75% to 8.75%. It is anticipated that the first meeting of the Citizens Oversight Committee will be sometime after April 1 of some, sometime after April one of two thousand and nineteen. And when do we actually start receiving revenues? There is usually a sixty-day lag from the time the, the retailers collect the sales tax to the time it makes its, goes through the state and then makes its way to the city. So, we anticipate that to happen any time after July one, twenty nineteen. That completes my presentation, and there we can answer questions, text suggestions, and the city clerk will be taking a lot of notes. And, so we'll be making sure that what we agreed to will be reflected in the final resolution that comes before the city council.
All right. So, council, have any questions, or would you like to hear cards? What's the pleasure of the group? Your cards? All right. Sure.
Staff and council, sorry about that. I sent you guys a letter so that I could get a whole bunch of information out to you all at one time, because I knew I could not meet a three-minute goal here. No kidding. But after seeing the presentation, I appreciate what staff has put together, and from reading what I already wrote to you, there are a couple of issues that I do have with it. So, I'm just going to point out a couple. One thing I did miss, for members that might miss meetings, that's something also that I would like that to be addressed, that if they miss a certain number of meetings, they would have to be replaced. For commission meetings, we don't have that very often. Sometimes for other meetings, you do. So, we would like those seats to be filled and make sure people are attending. I do not agree with commissioners not being allowed, some of the information that I wrote to you, being part of the ad hoc committee. We really found that having commissioners on that committee were very helpful. Staff is amazing, they did a great job, but what staff might want, and what residents might see every day and what they want, projects that they might think are more important, a lot of that comes from commission and their experience and what they know, being on a commission, the information that they get, what everything costs, that kind of thing. And even if you maybe don't agree with a commissioner being on there, or, one of the options I just thought of is possibly having commissioners, but they don't have any voting duties. So, you would still leave it up to the resident committee, but you would still get that little outside additional expertise coming in to give them some information. Fully expected, expected staff to prepare the list of projects and programs, but I do think, being part of the Measure GG school board, I think we found that there are a lot of people that were appointed to that originally, that felt like they were going to come in and be able to have all of the control, for lack of a better word. So, I think that's something that really needs to get out to the people. I fully expect that, and they have the expertise, and again, with the ad hoc, they did a fabulous job getting this information. So, I think that is something that would have to be put out to the people and let them be maybe a little more aware that staff knows what they're doing, they will generate a project list. One of the ideas that I had for you is maybe bringing forward a proj-, a project list that is ten items at a time, whether it's quarterly, every six months, annually, however, you know, they choose to do it, so that the committee would then be allowed to sort of choose their top few items that they would like to see done, and have some input that way. I know it's a lot of information, and thank you for your time.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, city council persons and staff. Betsy Roberts, I've been a resident for thirty-five years, so I've been here before the freeway, and all the growing pains, so forth. So, I was excited to see the opportunity to apply for this advisory group. I've been on advisory groups both at work and outside of work, so I know that you're just advising, you're not making final decisions. I did take a lot of notes. I like the idea that it's going to be limited to nine people. I do feel that either it should be all at-large members from a pool of applicants or a hybrid. One of the things, before the presentation, I had concerns that if a lot of the folks are already on commissions, that it's going to kind of skew what the opportunities are. So, I feel very strongly about that particular piece. The, the idea of staggered terms sounds like a good one. Related to the recruitment, again, I, I don't like the idea necessarily of a public lottery. It seems that all qualified applicants should be reviewed versus some people who might be good members of the group not being considered based upon whatever the process is. I think that related to the, the meetings, that the members of the group, we would need to look at maybe having meetings in the early evening or evening, so that you can draw on a broader variety of people. I work full-time, and to try to attend a meeting in the middle of the day, or in the middle of the afternoon during the week, would really not be possible. I'm sure there's many qualified applicants who might have that same situation. So, those are my comments at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Just a couple of comments, and I wish I had maybe your presentation to write on. Types of members. I think it would be important to have it an, an at-large rather than specific groups, just because that appears more diverse, and we don't have special interests in there. And I think that gives, lends a lot to the objectivity of what we're trying to do here. The terms, I, I like the idea of a staggered term, because you, then you're going to have some that have experience a little bit longer than others that don't. As far as, I'm sorry, can I read my notes here? Qualifications, as far as no council or commission, I get that, but you said at the time of appointment. What happens if they go, if they run for a commission or a council? Do they automatically come off of the commission or, or the advisory committee at that time? That's something, just a question that I had. I do like the idea of the independent council doing the pre-screening. I understand ultimately, council will have the final say. However, by using an, an independent company, this, this doesn't look, or give the appearance of loading or stacking the commission. Again, it's less biased that way. Supermajority, you don't require that when you replace somebody on city council, you don't require that on commission. I don't know why you would want it for this kind of advisory committing. And, well, I just think that those things, that, the, the more that council appears neutral on this, is better for everybody, gives a little more valid, validity to the advisory, and also to what we're trying to accomplish here. Thanks very much.
Madam Mayor, council members, as I said, my name's John Mada. I've been here thirty-five years too, and served on several commissions, most notably the Public Safety Commission, and I chaired the Charter Commission. So, don't, I was the neutral, so don't, don't throw things, whether you like it or don't. I would, I liked the presentation the city manager put together. I would, I would support nine people, I think that's a good number. If you get too many, it's, it becomes cumbersome to, to get everybody's input. I would, I would suggest the, the at-large. However, you know, a hybrid isn't all bad, because it does give you the opportunity to assure that there's a broader universe, and I think that's important for committees such as this, especially, you know, with the, the fact that we're dealing with city monies here. Staggered terms, I would definitely recommend staggered terms. The last thing you want is to have all your, all your, you know, knowledge walk away at one time. And, the, I also support not having people from other commissions on it. We had that issue on the public safety. Unfortunately, there weren't very many people that wanted to sit on it, and one of the volunteers was on two other committees, and it just wasn't a, it's not really a good fit, if you know what I mean. And he was immensely qualified to sit on ours, but he was already on two others. So, it, it really becomes a burden on the individuals that don't know how to say no. And as far as recruitment, you know, they all work. I wouldn't recommend going out and hiring a company to, to do this for you. You know, the auditor's going to charge you if he does anything extra. They're accountless, they always charge. They charge you for the stamp to mail your tax back in. So, the, you know, I would suggest a committee made up of the city council and whomever you think is, is qualified. One thing I would take issue with is registered voter. And I would caution on that, that although we would hope everybody is a registered voter, as citizens, you have the right not to register. And that right is as important as any of our other rights. It's, it's as important as the right to register. So, I would, I would say, if you're a citizen, you meet all those other requirements, you're an Orconian, your tax dollars are going to be spent, you have the right. Thank you so much for your time.
Hello, Teresa Edwards. I'm actually on the Pastore Preservation Committee, which I'm very proud of, and I wish I could be on this, because I, I find it fascinating, and I'd love to be a part of it. But the only thing I want to say tonight is that I think, and nobody has mentioned a nomination process or the submission of resumes. Like, this is a job, this is a really important thing to our city, and we obviously want the most talented people that we can find. And I don't think you should eliminate anyone from, they're submitting a resume or being nominated by our residents. I mean, there are a lot of people out here who know people, they can recommend people. Nomination is public input by the citizens who know the city. You know, the only thing, the, the, the requirements for being nominated, or to even be put on this committee is experience, education, and integrity. We want people that take it seriously, and we want people who are going to put a hundred percent. The only other thing I have is annual independent audit. I think that should be provided to the residents for transparency at the end of the year, and maybe presented in the form of a town hall meeting or something like that. Thank you.
Diane Collins.
Good evening, mayor, council. I'm just kind of going through the notes that I scribbled through our city manager's presentation. The number of members at a nine, that looks good. I do think it should be at-large, I don't think it should be required to be from specific groups or somehow designated like that. At-large gives the opportunity for people that may not be involved now to become involved, that this may have, they may have a passion for this where they don't have the time or the passion for other things. So, I think it should be in a at-large. There's staggered terms, or an initial staggered term, where half of the body is a two-year term, half of the body is a four-year term, and then everyone goes to a four-year term after that also could be an option. Qualifications, I don't have any. I do think that the initial screening should be by somebody other than council. Independent, let's keep this clean. Let's keep this out of the usual suspects, so to speak, where there can be no questions on, did the favorites get put onto the shortlist? So, I really think it should be a blind independent entity that doesn't have a voice in the fight. So, I'm, I'm a little back and forth on the council choosing versus the lottery, again, for that same reason of making this truly an independent advisory board. I don't think that being on a current commission or advisory council should preclude you from being considered for this. I think it should be taken into consideration, because yeah, if you're on four already, you know, do you really need to be on another one? So, we need to have some fresh blood and some fresh ice, but we also need people that are experienced and that know this city. So, that was pretty much my comments. Thank you.
Jody Webber.
Good evening, mayor, council. This is the first time I'm looking at this issue, and I'd like to provide probably further comments if I have time. But a couple of things, as I recall and refresh my recollection, city manager Andy, as far as what was in the statute, one thing that's missing in your presentation is, what's the purpose of this committee? You're identifying it as being an oversight committee, but yet, when I hear my fellow citizen Holder suggesting some other things, I, I'd like to see a purpose statement and having some understanding as to what that is. In other words, is this a, is it, from my understanding throughout the entire process and listening to Measure R presentation prior to the election, on this measure was an idea that the citizens would be providing oversight for the expenditures that are being determined by council. So, in other words, you still hold the responsibility as to what those projects would be, where they would go. In fact, having served on the ad hoc committee, we prioritized quite a number of capital improvement projects. So, all of that work is always, has already been done. So, from my perspective, I don't envision this, and maybe I'm misunderstanding some of the comments here, that this oversight committee in making recommendations or anything like that, I never got the impression that that would be their duty. Their duty, from my perspective, is oversight, that these funds are, are appropriated to capital improvement projects in, in a, in a manner in which the citizens were interested in, based on the determination that you're making in, you know, city council meetings and you hear from the public on. So, a purpose statement, I think, would be most important. At-large, I find to be probably the best source with third-party screening, again, because my understanding is that this was an oversight committee to make determination that the city funds are being spent appropriately. I also agree with the third, the third-party screening and taking the city council, where you've always been involved when it comes to electing or selecting applicants on these commissions, I would suggest taking you out of it almost entirely and doing it as a third party, so as to avoid the appearance of potential impropriety in selecting applicants that might be your buddies. I mean, we've always heard that with, with individuals that wind up on certain committees. The public lottery, in other words, similar to kind of what we did with the Citizens' Redistricting Commission, is once you had all that applicant, you had all the screening by a third party, it, then everybody was equal, and then it went to a public lottery system. So, then you've got more randomness and less appointment of special interests. One thing that also is missing is conflicts of interest. You don't have any indication, so in other words, as an oversight committee, do you want to consider the possibility of eliminating conflicts of interest, individuals who are family members of yours, family members of staff? Because again, it might give the appearance that somebody on the oversight commission might say, ah, well, Mayor Newton, or I mean, Mayor Grunmeyer, you know, really had this idea, and well, as it turns out, you know, it's your family member of some sort. So, keep in mind on conflicts of interest, I like two-year limit, I like the staggered, but the conflicts of interest are the other purpose, and purpose statement. Thank you.
Mayor, that concludes comments. All right. Thank you. I would like to say thank you to everyone that's come out this evening on this item. It's very important to our community, and having the input as we move forward on this is really of the utmost importance. So, with that, we'll bring it back up to council and receive comment from them. So, we'll start with Councilman Newton.
This will be somewhat, a little...
This will be somewhat, a little loose. One comment I'd like to make is that we're not going to cover everything tonight, and that please feel free to either call or email any council member, you know, tomorrow when the light bulb goes off, and I wish I would have said this, or I wish I would have said that. So please feel free to do that. That would be extremely helpful. A couple of good points. I can see both sides of having a commissioner on an oversight committee. There was, I guess with the comment of, I like the independent auditor making the selection and making the ranking, and I wouldn't preclude a commissioner from that, but see where they fall in the ranking. The main thing with me all through the campaign with Measure R and I think with council was, this all came down to trust. And so my personal feeling is, the more that goes to the Oversight Committee, I'm fine And the way I somewhat perceive this was that staff would bring certain projects, let's say between, you know, we have funding to either improve these trails or improve this street. An Oversight Committee would look at the numbers, the magnitude of the project, and make a recommendation, let's do the street before the trail. And what I had in my mind was that, let's say on council, we go, wow, this trail really needs to work before the street, or as just an example, not to overrule the Oversight Committee, but being able to have an option to send it back to the Oversight Committee. And I would think just a simple majority would be sufficient for that, to ask them to relook at a project, okay, or a recommendation. If we were to go opposite of a recommendation, that has to be a minimum four-fifths supermajority vote. I would not be acceptable to, like a simple majority, to overrule a recommendation. I'm looking forward to the Oversight Committee. So when my neighbor says, hey, why did you fix that street instead of this street? I can point at the Oversight Committee and go, hey, it was their recommendation, you know? So Andy, I have a question for you, that it is going to take a majority vote of council to adopt a resolution to form an Oversight Committee, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Looking in the future, with future councils, does the possibility exist that a future council could adopt a resolution to disband the Oversight Committee? Or is that?
No.
Okay. Because that's part of the Measure R legality on the vote. I have more, but I'll wait. Thanks.
Councilman Bash.
So I sit on the GG Oversight Board, and I spent 18 months on the committee that led to the Measure R. And just a couple of thoughts on that. First off, my reason that maybe I would be concerned of commissioner, maybe they could be on it, once they got on this, they might have to leave the commission. That 18 months was the single most grueling experience I've ever had. It was grueling. And we learned about parks, we learned, and I was a parking reg commissioner for 10 years, and I learned stuff I didn't even know. Streets, trails, county partnerships. One of the things I do know is that, and no offense to anyone, but the times of Norco has gone into bad times, is when you had a majority of three brand-new council people. We lost the land where Costco sits, we lost the right to the Eastvale corridor, we took on a fire department knowing we couldn't pay for it. Those were all three-two votes. Today is a time when you have, I mean, you have to know stuff. So I would be concerned that you would have to spend a great deal of upfront time to be briefed on exactly what it is you're being asked to do, and what, how you grade a street, all these different things. There's a lot of misinformation out there that if you didn't sit on that committee, you don't know it's misinformation. The GG Board works a lot like what Jody said. What we do is we're kind of told what projects are going to do, and then we oversee them. At times, it gets really, really, really contentious. We have some very sharp people on that Oversight Board, but ultimately, the school board is the deciding factor. So it kind of works in the way that you talked about. So we have to look at that. And they're constantly bringing in experts. We get attorneys, we get all kinds of people that come in, and when we have questions, they bring in the people we need to know. And candidly, we've also had times when people had to go away because it wasn't fitting what we needed to have happen nor the school board. So I'm kind of back and forth. Is this something where they decide what's going to be done? And if that's the case, you've got to put 18 months into about two months, I figure. You're going to have to learn that stuff, and it's going to be very, very hard. I mean, you have to literally learn the whole city. I like the idea of an independent council group looking at it, but I would like to have maybe an appeal. So let's say somebody feels like, well, they didn't have their best interview, or maybe they felt they got a short shrift, that maybe there's some way that they can appeal either to council or to somebody. I like a simple majority. Corinne, in her letter, talked about maybe having a supermajority that would have to approve maybe the recommendations. Here's my fear. Contrary to what people think, I really trust this council. I think this council is going to do everything they can, and I'm like Greg, it's like, boy, I'm sure happy they're going to pick. But I also know, being a bit of a historian, as I look back at those three-twos that I described previously, they can do a lot of damage, and they have. And so one of the things I'm concerned about is, one, how do we give councils the latitude as the elected officials, but at the same time, maybe protect against that future council that maybe just doesn't, or just new, they just don't know anything. And so I have that concern. I think the big question for me now is, is it, which one's the chicken and which one is the egg? Is the committee going to be one that makes the recommendations to us, or do we make the recommendations to the committee, and then they determine how it is that, which ones we're going to be doing? And then if, let's say there's a catastrophic event, will we still maintain the power that we say, committee, we need to work back and forth, like Crestview? We had to go to Crestview, we had to work with the county, we had to do a whole bunch of things. It was a really, it's really complicated to work with the county. And then the other thing in terms of, I don't know if you need to be on a commission, but I do think you need to know some stuff. You need to understand the trail issues, you need to understand, it's just a lot of things that you need to understand. You can't just come at this blind. People want cities to be run like businesses, but it's actually like, private business is like football, and the public sector is like baseball. They both have a ball, but they're different. But that said, I think in our GG Committee, I don't think Corinne was on it when we first started, we had some people that they just didn't fit, they didn't quite want to do the work. And the other part of that, too, is they got to show up. The GG Committee is overseeing millions of dollars, and we fight to get a quorum. And I think that if somebody misses two meetings, I think they got to go away. And we have council people, they make their meetings, we have commissioners that make their meetings, so I'm not certain if that, it's just, it's a huge time element, especially in the beginning. There's a whole bunch of legal stuff, I would imagine, would come aboard on that. So I really appreciate the input, though, and like Greg, please call me, send me emails. I really want to be, I want to be reactive to the public on this, because like him, I want to ensure everybody that they can trust this process. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilman Hoffman.
Well, initially, I was totally against having committee members, or commission members, on the Oversight Committee. And then when we talk about the hybrid committee, I thought to myself, well, this is a better way to go. And the reason I say that, we were out asking you to vote in trust us on Measure R for the infrastructure. We talked about trails, streets, parks, and public safety. That was the four areas that we were looking at. And so with that, if we were to develop, you know, this Oversight Committee is essentially going to work to look at the four to four and a half million dollars annually, that's eventually will be coming into it, and how it's going to go. And it is important that people on commissions at least sit in there in a hybrid committee with at-large members. And that's my feeling on it. I think somebody from the Streets and Trails Commission and someone from the Parks Commission. We do not have a public safety commission, but at the same time, there are people in the city that are, we have a lot of retired firemen, we have a lot of retired police officers, so somebody like that would fit into that. And as I was going through and thinking about that, if we, if this Oversight Committee wanted to deviate from any one of those areas, because we, you trusted us as voters to put this on and to do it right, they can't deviate from it. That would require unanimous decision by that Oversight Committee, along with some, really, I mean, from the City Manager and the Public Works Director and our Parks Director, is why we deviate, because that's what we said we were going to do with that money. So that's the thing about the Oversight Committee. If they wanted to do that, they would have to be unanimous in that decision-making before they sent it to council, and they'd have to have a strong reason. But I'm like with Greg, it requires a supermajority to disapprove anything that the Oversight Committee does. I don't, this is why we did it. We have to put controls. I believe the five of us will adhere to it, but I have to look down the road in 10 years, what's going to happen? If people get on this council and they just shine on another advisory committee and don't pay attention to what they're asking. I do believe in having an independent review of the applicants, and the reason being is, they don't have any stake in the game. They're going to look at the people and see if they're qualified or not, based upon a criteria that I hope our City Manager would have to look at people. That's the important thing, is we say, this is what we want, and we'll have to work with them on that, but it's independent. They don't know us. They're not the guy that you work at Horse Week with, they're not the guy you work on the Fair Committee with, they're not the guy that you sit down and work on the rodeo with. These are independent people, they're independent thinkers. And that way, you get a good membership in critical thinkers, and that's what we need, critical thinkers on this. Pretty much Kevin and Greg already said the rest of it, but I agree, no one likes, I was on planning commission, and one of our planners used to miss him all the time, God bless him, he was a great guy, and we cut him a lot of slack, but it's tough when people don't make meetings. You don't make two meetings, you're gone. It means you don't care. And as far as, I think it would behoove us to at least have everyone start with a two-year, and then on a lottery position, go to a three-year term, and then max them out after two years, after two terms. That's plenty of time, because they're going to, this is going to, like Kevin said, those people that worked on the ad hoc committee, I went to every one of those meetings. That was a lot of work, and they're sitting in there shaking their heads. Yes, it was a lot of work. And it's time-consuming, especially when you start reviewing all those numbers, and with no compensation at all for your time. So it does take a lot of time. All right, thank you.
Thank you, and I want to thank everybody for coming tonight and putting in their suggestions and comments, and I agree with most of you on those. I agree that we do need an independent group to screen these applicants. And like the one lady asked, how would you apply? Would you just contact you, Cheryl, the city clerk, get an application and fill out anybody's eligible to apply? The more the merrier. That gives the committee that's going to review them and screen them and pass them on down to us for selection, that gives them a bigger choice, gives us a bigger choice. I think that, my thinking on the way to select them is that we do it by the lottery. We get accused of putting our buddies here and there and everywhere else. I think that if we just draw, after they've been selected, we just draw, then we don't know who we're drawing out, and we'll still get accused of it anyway, but I think that's the way to go on the selection. But I like the idea that Department Heads Chad and Brian will be the one making the decisions on what projects we need to, we need to have done, and pass them on to the committee to review, because they're in the field, so to speak, every day, they know what needs to be done and everything, and they can pick it out, and we can decide, the council can decide whether we need it or not. But I think, like Councilman Hoffman said, two terms is plenty. On that, and start them out with a two- or three-year term and stagger them. Like the one gentleman said, you don't want to get all new people at one time, you want to have two or three with some experience on there when you have to replace them. But I think all in all, this is a pretty good, pretty good deal, and I'm looking forward to seeing a bunch of applicants and new people getting involved and everything, and I hadn't seen Mr. Lattes since the Charter Committee, and that was, what, 12 years ago or so?
Fifteen now.
Yeah, I can't believe that, but we appreciate your resurfacing, sir. Anyway, thanks you much, people, I'm glad you came out and joined in on this conversation. Thanks again.
All right, so just to run down the list, I am for an independent group to select the members. I also agree with the lottery, so that, again, as much as we can remove the council from the process would be the best, staggering the terms. I think a hybrid would be good. I understand the importance of history and having people that understand the community, but I also feel like if we don't get new blood and new people in and let them learn the process, we're going to get stagnant, and people aren't going to step up because new people aren't allowed. So I want to make sure we're very cognizant of the fact that at some point in time, we all had to learn. I think I'm a pretty good example of that myself, and I'm still learning, and I think all of us up here are still learning, and so I think that's really important. And then the last thing that I would like to say about this matter is, this is our opportunity as a council and as city staff to make good on a promise and to make our community better for everyone, all of our residents visually, with infrastructure and all those things. And it's an opportunity for us to work together so that we make sure that the funds are used appropriately and correctly. And for me, it's an opportunity for public officials to work to earn back the trust of residents at the local level. I think so much, when we look at government, there's a lot of distrust and a lot of anger, and I look forward to... and I look forward to the opportunity to work with everybody so that even at a very local level, we can rebuild that trust and restore people's faith in government and make this really a positive thing for everybody. So I'm looking forward to starting the process. So with that, is there anything else from council? Yes.
So a seminal question for me is that, and how it's selected, I've heard good suggestions, I'm good with that, but the one question is, is, again, which one's the chicken, which one is the egg? So we would have the department heads make the suggestion, and then the Oversight Committee would oversee it, like the GG Board, or as it was presented to the public, did they make the selections? That's a question. And two, I just want to make, forgive the history, I want to make a historical observation that I think we need to be very cautious. City of Norco became a city, we had a city council, we had a Public Works Commission, Committee, Commission. I mean, Public Works, it was its own entity, Community Services District, and we had a Parks District. You paid taxes to all three. To become a city, you had to have that in place. They fought and fought and fought and fought and fought until finally, in a move that's now illegal, the people that were on council got elected, it was all elected positions, got elected to those two committees, Commissions, and folded them underneath the city council and on a three-two vote, didn't bring the taxes. So basically, Norco has survived as the last city in the state of California by law on one leg. Had that not happened, we actually wouldn't be sitting here tonight. So the three people that voted hated taxes. We don't want taxes. And what happened was, is they didn't understand, had they not done that, they couldn't have become a city. Three brand-new council people. So I want to make sure that this hybrid includes some experience. The one thing I also, I just don't believe in term limits. We actually have them in the GG Board, but I think it goes to nine years, some people are six years, they're different, because you want to make sure there's always a majority that understands what it is they're looking at. I mean, I'll go with that, but as long as there's that majority of people that understand what their task, but I think basically, we have to ask a question. Are they going to make the recommendations and decide, or are we going to decide, or staff going to decide, and then they do the oversight? I'm not sure which one of those we're doing.
Sure, I can answer that question if you want to start there. The whole way this is conceived is that the Citizens Oversight Committee will have active role, and this also goes to Jody's question or issue. Active role in terms of determining how the money is spent and in terms of making sure that how they agreed that the money is to be spent is spent that way in the, on the back Again, in terms of generating the initial priority of projects to be executed, that lies with staff. And the committee reviews that, discusses those proposals, and if there are items in the staff recommendation that they don't believe should be done, they'll provide, they'll suggest alternatives or ask staff to go back until such a time they believe that they have a consensus at the committee level that they then can make their recommendation to the city council. This is not about a committee that simply comes at the back end and determines whether the city council has spent the money the way the measure is written, is intended to actually give some control to the Citizens Oversight Committee in terms of making that decision, being part of that decision process.
Any other questions? Yes.
Couple of things on that note, and maybe in the future, I'd like to hear more from Jody, because part of this that I saw, like with the ad hoc committee, that maybe staff, and correct me if I'm wrong, that staff would bring a certain item that you had for discussion, but with the involvement of the ad hoc committee, more came out of that, okay? And brought more discussion and different ways to look at it and different approaches. That's somewhat how I visualize a component of the Oversight Committee, that maybe it can also grow within itself. So not quite sure exactly if I'm communicating that correctly, but it's, that's how I perceive the ad hoc committee and their role with that. So if part of that component can stay with the Oversight Committee, that I'm good with I was going to go back to the comment on term limits. We do not require any of our commissions or our advisory groups to have term limits. Councilmember Bash mentioned that maybe on GG they do, but it's longer-term out there. Right now, I would not support term limits on the Oversight Committee. And back to type of members, whether it's at-large or hybrid. When I served as a member of the Oversight Board, the Successor Agency Oversight Board for Redevelopment Agency, my position was I represented the county of Riverside's interests. I had no clue what those were, okay? So I would rather sustain it at-large and have nothing to do with specific, because it didn't work. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Just, I can't get that. I mean, we have mostly agreed on what I believe we need to do. Going back to the hybrid, there are two issues. Is the hybrid consists of allowing those who currently serve on commission as well as those that are selected on a citywide at-large basis? So if you currently serve on a planning commission, you can apply to serve on this as opposed to being precluded to serve on that, from serving on it. So that is one. When we talk hybrid, are we talking about people applying at-large, but also reserving certain positions for people who currently serve on existing committee?
I think you'd have to look at how they were ranked by the independent auditor. Let's say we have a Parks Commissioner that spent a year and a half on an ad hoc committee that could possibly rank very high in an at-large situation. I think that could be, should be considered. Let's say you also have another commissioner that ranks at the bottom, I don't see any, carry any weight for that at all.
Pretty hard to administer that way. These are decisions that we need to make going in. So we know what the criteria is for people to be selected. The qualification is issue, issues that the independent screener will look at, but as a city council and as a community, we need to determine, do we want to have folks who currently serve on commission be able to serve? And if so, are we going to reserve a certain number of seats for those who currently serve on commission and a certain number of seats for those who come on at-large basis, not serving on any commission?
What if you chose by a lottery? I mean, if you pulled the names out of the hat, you would do. But that.
So if, on an at-large basis, or if it's at-large, you have one lottery pool where everybody goes in once they are shortlisted, right? And they will be picked out of that. If, on the other hand, you have a number of seats reserved for those who are on the commission, and they will have to establish a process for selecting those that currently serve on commission, say you have four seats for those who currently serve on commission, and we may have to identify which commissions they need to come from, or say, everybody who currently serves on commission can apply, and once those applications are received, they are put into their own pool of lottery, and then you can select four out of that. And there is another pool that has those who are applicants at large, where you can select from five.
Well, I mean, so the first thing we probably need to do is, one, establish how many members of this Oversight Committee we have, whether it's going to be, when you say nine, seven, whatever it is, it's 11 or whatever we have. And then, like you said, I think, Andy, is that we have to see if we're going to reserve a certain number of those seats as at-large or a current commissioner that would, or a commissioner that's seated now or one of our commission seats. Is that what you're?
Yes.
Yeah, so first of all, we should decide how many people we want on this Oversight Committee, and then the numbers.
Perhaps let anybody.
Cheryl, I'm sorry, if I could interject. Could we go through each slide individually, because these, there are options, A, B, and C? Would it be for my, for efficiency and clarification, if we can walk through each slide and through each item and choose an option?
The name.
But this is not going to be an official action at this point.
Then we'll bring this back through a resolution at the next city council meeting.
Which I'm fine with consensus here.
I'm fine with consensus.
What I was going to suggest is maybe let anybody apply, and, you know, we don't allow a Parks Commissioner to be a planning commissioner, and maybe if they apply and they're accepted, then perhaps they have to resign from the other commission, which would help us to get more people involved in the city government.
If we could start with the name, and would we include a purpose statement?
My only problem with it is, is I'm trying to think of what the acronym is going to be like, because we just say that GG, so Measure, I guess Measure R.
MR Committee.
Measure R Committee, there you go. Or the MR Committee?
All right. Duties, I think, again, this is, to some extent, Jody, answers your question in terms of what, no, I'm sorry. I think this is where your question is answered, even though it's not articulated in one sentence or a couple of sentences. This is sort of what the purpose is, is defined by these duties here, where, again, they review proposed use of Measure R revenues, prioritize proposed uses, make necessary adjustments, and provide recommendation to the city council. Once the money is spent, review Measure R revenue and expenditure reports, and they provide feedback and recommend transmission to the city council. And again.
I guess what's missing is between one and two for me, is I just want to make sure we codify that it's based, that the initial start point is recommendations by your department heads.
Isn't it duties that we're outlining on this role of staff?
Yeah, I guess what I was just, I just thought I'd like to see it here for the duties of the boards, to make it clear. And then also, the meetings, I think this is the opportunity to say how many meetings they can miss and be removed.
We looked at that, and we, the city council has already established a policy with respect to attendance, and if you don't meet a certain number of attendance, then you will be dropped from serving.
How many is that now?
Cheryl, do you have what that number is?
I believe if it's three meetings within a 12-month period, you receive a warning letter. I believe five or six, six meetings, then you can be removed from the commission by the city council.
I don't think that works on this particular committee at all.
I think if you miss three in a row, you should be out.
You missed two, well, depending on, I think two.
Don't go to six, that's a whole year.
Yeah. Or two in a year even, I mean.
How many meetings you're going to be?
How many, yeah.
The criteria of your meeting every month is probably different than if you're meeting quarterly.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll come back to that then. Moving on. Okay, so at-large, again, is where every resident who meets the qualification criteria can apply.
First question is, how many?
Did we, yeah, we can go, is that?
The number.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry about that. No, I got it. Yeah, we, again, we are recommending that the number not exceed nine, but city council can decide to exceed that or actually lower it to like a seven.
I like nine.
Yeah, most folks who spoke like nine.
See how many applicants you get.
Right.
You may be revisiting a lot of this based on that.
Okay, so at-large appointment, the question is, is this going to be the only option that we're going to use to appoint committee members?
I would just say to those that wanted some history on the committee, if you do purely at-large and purely lottery, you will not guarantee anybody with history on that committee.
Because part of the importance of this is, there's got to be an advocacy. I mean, there's got to be, and I don't know if you use commission members or what, but I mean, like the GG, which, again, is not the perfect example. You have parents, a parent representative, you have a PTA representative, you have a business representative, and they're from different, and you have to meet a certain specific criteria. I'm not suggesting that here, but you could run a risk where you have nine people that are going to learn everything from scratch, and that's dangerous.
You know, with that, Andy, or Mayor?
Yes.
Maybe at-large, maybe start with five hybrid four members, just as an example, as far as advocacy, that, what about the seniors? To have an advocacy voice from like the seniors?
That's not what a measure of it.
I mean, where you had mentioned, like, you know, different parents or parent groups.
And maybe you apply for each specific thing that you feel you plug into?
Well, let's think about what Measure R was for. It was for infrastructure and public safety. And I understand you just want to go to the seniors, which I don't have a problem with, but I would like to see, keep on track to what this four to four and a half million dollars was going to be used for, which was infrastructure. That's why I suggested that we include as a hybrid, that we have selective positions from like the parks, streets or trails, and of course, we don't have a public safety commission, but again, those are, we want somebody in that area. And that's why I said that, is that's what this funds are for.
I would still think that seniors would have a lot of input on infrastructure. They certainly walk to Stater Brothers over sidewalks, streets.
Do we have an organized senior group that going to?
Seniors and pets. The Senior Center has a senior advisory committee, it's the STAR Committee, so there is an advisory committee set up that represents all of the seniors who use, and the two housing areas that use the seniors.
seniors who use, and the two housing areas that use the senior facilities. So, if, if you're asking about an advisory group, there is a, an advisory group that is made up of the seniors, which makes up the various clubs within the Senior Center and memberships, including the senior lunch and meals program.
I've sat on that committee for, I mean, gone to those for nine years, and there's some good advocates there, but they tend to come and go, is the only problem.
They're not going to misunderstand what the Measure R thing is for, though, are they? I mean, they're going to understand it's for infrastructure, like Ted was talking. That's what, what we voted on, because I remember when Rose was in charge of the seniors, and God bless her, every time a quarter come into City Hall, she wanted to go to the seniors, which they needed it, but this is, I don't have any problem helping them out, because I help them out, but this is strictly for infrastructure and public safety, so I don't want them to get the wrong idea. But you put them on the committee, that they're going to be advocating for money for their little garden, or whatever they got over.
Well, you make an excellent point. When I was a park and rec commissioner, the most important thing in the city was Parks and Rec. And so if I'd been on that committee, I would have been fighting for parks and lights, and I would have been fighting for, and maybe, I don't know, that maybe that's what you need, is that kind of, I'm not sure.
I just took it as a community group and interest.
Any other input on that?
Yeah, what I'm hearing is hybrid, and I will, for example, consist of five at-large members, and there are four members from interest groups such as Parks and Rec's Commission, Streets and Trails Commission.
What about the first two years? That's when you do your, you do your commissions, just first two years, make those your two year terms. Public or, uh, planning, Parks and Rec, Streets and Trails, and just let those be two-year terms, so at least you begin with some expertise. And then the rest of it at-large. What are there, four commissions? Parks, dun, dun, yeah, four.
We have planning commission, I don't know, are we?
Right. Maybe, maybe, and the rest of them be at-large. Hey, Ted, speak up.
I just, no, I just, I, I agree with him for the hybrid. I don't want to restrict the number of years, I just don't, you know, I don't, you know, maybe we shouldn't have term limits, like Greg said on it, because...
I didn't mean restrict, I just meant you start out your first year, and after that, you go to at-large.
The ad hoc committee, which you set on, was composed of commissioners, and was composed, it was composed of at-large members. And the at-large members did have a hard time, they caught up, but it did take them a while. And the commissioners provided a lot of valuable information, but it was also an ad hoc committee, so it didn't, it was not structured as, as tightly knit as what we're doing up here and what an oversight committee, but at the same time, I, my initial point for not having a commissioner on, because I didn't want people to take their pet projects and push and push and push on top of, of an oversight committee, but at the same time, like you said, the information and the education that they bring to it is very important, because they see in their commission meetings the needs. They go through their budgets, they determine how much funds are going to be, especially on our parks, which, you know, that's very important here. Our trails, Chad works on those. You guys don't do much street anymore, because basically you have your PMI thing that takes, takes care of most of that, but then again, they have to get up to speed on how you do your pavement management index in the system. And as far as public safety, like I said, those are things that we said we were going to take care of, and that's long as we take care of that. I think the good part about at-large people is it brings in, like Jody just left, but it brings some people like Jody Weber, very smart, I mean, she, she ran that ad hoc committee, and boom, and had it going, so that's a very important thing. So, that's the kind of people that we need on this commission that balances out our, the people with the information and the citizens at-large, people that have, that have, are critical thinkers, and that's where I'm at.
And, and they're connected to department heads, so maybe we have an independent body pick from amongst one person on each commission, and the rest would be at-large?
Although, what could solve this problem, at least in my mind, is have...
Mike.
Is to have all of them selected at-large without excluding any member that's passed on an existing commission.
You don't want to make one commission member a permanent member of the, so in other words, you always have somebody from Park and Rec, because they're connected to Brian, whoever sits in that seat, you have one member from your planning commission that's always connected to Steve?
Well, right, the reality of that is that Brian, in developing his list of projects, is going to hopefully work with his Parks and Rec commission folks, but those who have interest in also participating in this should be allowed to apply. If we don't preclude that, that gives everybody the opportunity to participate.
So you don't want to reserve a certain amount of slots for them on there?
Yes.
You do, or you don't?
I don't.
Okay.
That's what my recommendation, what I'm talking about, is at, at-large, that doesn't exclude, exclude anyone.
Other thoughts on that?
I'm good with that. Can always change it.
Excellent. Oh.
If it doesn't work.
It could be too many or none at all.
Yeah, absolutely, it could, but willing.
Does the council want reserved spots on the oversight or not?
What's that?
Do you want reserved spots on the oversight, or none at all?
Well, my thoughts, since this was going to be the citizens getting on the oversight, and that's what I understood the whole time they was campaigning for Measure R, it was a good time for the citizens to get involved and put their trust back into the city. I don't want to see it get filled up with all commissioners. I'd rather have the biggest majority being the citizens, and maybe two commissioners, one from Parks and Rec, if you got to have them, and one from Streets and Trails, but otherwise, I'd rather just see the, all be, move them be citizens. I think there'll be enough applying, I think there'll be enough qualified people. You had seven or eight in here that spoke tonight that is probably really qualified. I mean, the one that just came out of retirement from 12 years ago or so, you know, Jody and them guys.
The other assumption you're making of, in reserving spots and saying, we're going to have these commissions, is that you're going to have commissioners that want to do that, on top of being commission, being their commission, and if you don't, what do you do? You may have commissioners that are doing it reluctantly, isn't something you want. So, maybe better off just seeing what hap, you know, doing it at-large and see what happens.
Well, I agree with Andy is to see where we go with that large, but I also think Berwin makes a good point, and that is, at least have two commissioners, one from the parks area, and one from Streets and Trails, and the rest, the other seven could be at-large. Those are just seats.
But, but that's only if they choose to. It's not going to be a requirement that we have to have one from Parks and Rec and one from Streets and Trails.
Once you build it into the resolution, though, it assumes that as a requirement.
That's the problem. And, and you wouldn't even necessarily get a Streets and Trails commissioner that had any particular experience. I mean, if there's only one that's interested, and that one's been on the commission for only two years and is a relatively new resident, I don't know that you solved any problems. And what happens if you don't have anybody that wants to spend, if you choose monthly meetings, which I think is probably unlikely, but if you choose monthly meetings, what if you don't have anybody that is interested and, on top of all the stuff they have to do as a Streets and Trails commissioner, wants to spend another night, a month, plus all the work related to doing the analysis?
Let's just open it up to everybody. Let's just do it that way, and just, just like Berwin said, we had eight people here that looked good, and have, I have no doubt, well, really what it takes is a commitment to work hard.
So you would not exclude a current?
No, I wouldn't exclude, I, there's a part of me that thinks if you get on this, you should probably resign from the other one, but I, I'm not, I'm okay either way, but just open it up, see what happens.
Cheryl.
Could the commissioners come to the meetings as special guests, as someone suggested?
It's open meeting.
There'll be open meetings, correct?
So, rather than having them be appointed, or as permanent members, they could just come in as, as needed?
Of course, yeah. I mean, the Brown Act would require that we allow them to, anybody, to show up and speak and make their feelings known on any particular subject.
All right. Next slide, Andy.
Uh, the next...
Oh, term lengths, I guess, huh?
Yeah. Lance, it looks like we, majority of our folks spoke about how many is that got, Tom? That would be, for example, two years and four years? So how many?
The way we did it on the GG board was, when they appointed everybody, we actually drew lots.
Right, and that's what would happen here.
That's what we did. We just drew lots. You get, okay, you got the short stick, you got two years, you got a longer stick, you got four years. I think that was a really fair way to do it.
So you did a two and four year?
Yeah, and then you could have a re-up.
Okay, I'm good with two and four years.
I tried. I've been there six years.
Okay, term limits. It looks, uh...
I'm a no.
No.
No?
No, let's, let's go with that.
Okay. Sorry about that. Is there anything in here anybody's objecting to?
Well, we'd have to take off to not be a member.
Oh, not be a registered voter?
No, 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 not be a member of a city commissioner or advisor.
Okay, yeah.
The comment that was made about being a registered voter, I guess I see both sides of that.
I'm sorry.
The registered voter?
If.
Chad? Uh, yeah. Yeah.
Is the, the difference between what is a regular commission appointment right now is, the registered voter is not on there, correct?
That's correct.
So why was it added as a recommendation on this one?
Good question. We, we felt that this is an item that you, you gotta believe in it, or you don't believe in it, and, and the way you believe in it is actually exercising some civic responsibilities, that if, that's, that's, that's what we thought.
Right, but there were some registered voters that voted no.
Yeah, that's what I understand.
So, but I'm just saying, they had, they didn't show a passion for, I mean, they did show passion just to, the opposite one, so I just don't... They participated in the process, correct?
Robin, wouldn't you think that, if, if you were going to go through the effort and apply and want to be on this committee, that you probably are a registered voter?
I would say probably, but I'm just wondering, if we're going to add that as a qualification here, why we would not be consistent across all commissions?
I don't know.
So...
Cheryl, was that on all commissions?
No.
No, it's not.
Well, for me, I think we need to put it on all the commissions. I realize you don't have to be a registered voter, but it does show, I know that in past elections, when you discover that somebody was running for office and suddenly decides they're going to register to vote, you're kind of like, whoa, that's kind of squirrely. I mean, registering to vote, I think, shows at least the lowest threshold of civic responsibility, and that's my personal opinion. I mean, I'm just one vote, but I believe you need to be a registered voter. You need to make that choice. Too many people died for you to have that vote.
No, I'm, I'm good with that, Kevin. I just want to stay consistent with all the other committees and commission.
Then I think at some point, we need to revisit all the commissions.
You know, you bet, and then if they don't want to register vote, because maybe they don't want to serve jury duty.
And that's exactly why people don't register to vote.
That's why they don't register to vote. Shame on them.
But you know what? Then what we'll do is keep it off, and I'd like, I would like, at the end, I will ask to agendize that, because I want to talk about commissions anyway.
Yeah, or if you want to leave it on, I'm more about the issue of consistency as well, just making sure that it's the same across the board, so...
This one, and then we'll bring you out of ones for review.
I'd like to.
Considered as well, because this Measure R was elected by the voters, unlike other commissions where...
That's right. Looks like, again, this is a screening process. It appears the consensus here was to have an independent third-party performer, and looks like everyone was, most people were comfortable with having our independent auditors, be that third party that performs this initial screening.
Yep.
What would you project the cost on the independent auditors? I know a professional screening firm or consultant would probably be looking at $6 to $25,000.
I, I suspect this won't cost us more than $3,000 for the independent auditors to do the screening. Okay, shortlist of applicants. One, once, as part of that screening process, they need to establish minimum number of applicants relative to the number of vacancies that exist. So, at this initial go-around, we have nine members that we need to select, so what is the preferred number in the shortlist?
To clarify, if we did a lottery, the shortlist would be the names in the bucket, correct?
That's correct, yes.
So, why couldn't we just put anybody that met the qualifications in the bucket, instead of having a shortlist? I'm just asking.
If they come out with 15...
They would, they would shortlist it, and then...
And whoever, however many that is.
You would assume all of them are qualified. My only caveat to that, and I'm going to bring it up at the end, is we need to review the norms for our commissioners, what they can and cannot do. We have to do that.
Well, on this one, if we got this committee that's going to screen them, I would hope that they had more than nine that they threw back at us. If they got 15, we still pull nine names out. If they got 25, we still pull nine names out, but the, whatever they throw at us should all be just about equal across there. It's kind of like drawing a race, isn't it, Newton?
Based upon the mayor's comment, though, is the, is the, is the criteria only going to be whether or not you're a registered voter, and you live in Norco, and you're a US citizen, period, with no ranking other than that?
That would be not.
So there would, the, the shortlist may well be the original long list.
Could be.
Because I expect nobody's going to apply that doesn't meet, when it reads a list of here's what I got to do, they're probably not going to apply unless they meet those criteria.
Cheryl, have we had people apply for commissions that did not meet the criteria before?
Rarely. Does that happen? But it has happened, yes. We've had to disqualify applicants.
And they would have to submit a resume, I'm assuming?
Yes, they would be required to.
Although, if, I mean, the resume becomes irrelevant if the only criteria are qualifications.
We need to create, we need to create what the criteria... We need to create, we need to create what the criteria would be. But in other words, we need to ask the auditors what questions need to be asked, I think.
I mean, if it's just criteria, staff can do, yes, you're a registered voter, yes, you're a U.S. citizen. I mean, that's a 15-minute job, as opposed to an auditor trying to rank based upon their background and applicability to this kind of system.
Well, if we require a resume and other information, just like the questions that are on any other commissioner's applications, I would assume it would be standard, and then take a percentage to put in the bucket, then the top 25%, but then we run the risk of if only five apply, then we don't fill a commission. So, I don't know.
And then we begin, then we begin to appoint, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, we've had this discussion.
Gigi, they're not coming out of the woodwork to be on that.
As I was going to say, a lot, a lot of these questions are, have, are going potentially to be revisited, depending upon the number of candidates. If there's nine total candidates, that's different than if there are 150.
So can you come up with a list of questions, Andy, between you and the department heads, of things that you feel that would...
Or something they can't.
Yeah. And avoid commissioner things, but things that would be fair, that some kind of, I don't think you'd take five or 10 questions, it just...
And we could also bring those questions when we bring the resolution for approval.
Yeah.
Can I take just several questions?
Okay, I'm good with that.
Okay, so we will be going to option number one, to review all quality applicants.
Yeah, that's good.
Oops. Go back.
Yep.
Okay, so, the question is, how would the city council make their final decision?
I thought it was a lottery. They pull the names out of the hat in a public meeting.
I thought it was.
Okay, I think that's...
They throw us 15 or 20 names, and we draw nine. That's the way we select them.
We'll let the madam mayor do it.
Yeah.
Thank you. I can delegate, right, since I'm the mayor?
Yeah. The next question is, is when a vacancy appears unscheduled, scheduled and unscheduled vacancies do go through the same process?
Apply and lottery.
Okay.
I think.
There's just information here, meetings. That's information, frequency of meetings.
I think they're going to have to determine that. They'll probably have more meetings up front. They could, we had weekly meetings, remember, in the beginning, then we had bi-weekly meetings? I think once they meet, I think, depending on their knowledge, I think they're going to have to determine that themselves.
Agreed.
All of, for the purposes of the resolution and the Brown Act, you're probably going to want to designate specific number of meetings, even if they, essentially, it's special meetings, they need to meet more often. So if it's...
Once a month.
Once a month, then...
Yeah, once a month. Yeah.
Well, it's also going to determine the, the availability of staff or the frequency, the frequency for staff and you, Andy, to bring items forward to the Oversight Committee. Then, just like with other commissions, if there's no business to be conducted, then the meeting gets canceled?
Yeah. I, I would think at least quarterly, and then, and as needed.
Quarterly, and then special meetings as needed?
As needed, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, every, every two months.
Okay. So, number two, this is something they can determine on their own.
Correct.
This is information only? I would suggest, unless there's something to add here, this...
Anything to, from council to add?
Determine the number of requirements. I think we need to make that a supermajority, four fifths.
For the second bullet point?
The bullet, yes. Yep.
Yeah, does that horse have a cribbing collar on, look like he's trying to crib?
I think it's an airb.
I wouldn't start up with that right now, Ted.
Yeah, I do, just simple majority.
Resolutions, rules, regulations, everything else.
Can I ask a question to the council on that item? I have concerns regarding overturning something from the commission, because this has been a discussion between Brian and I, and how we move forward with, with making recommendations or running projects, in that, for me especially, I've had to bob and weave on certain projects because of issues that have occurred as far as, once we determine we're trying to do a project, it actually costs more money, we have to take money from other projects, those projects don't get done, or we, we add in another project that wasn't intended. I just want to make sure we're not getting any conflict of, is this committee intended to really approve the projects, or the amount of funding that Brian and I are seeking to do the work, but then the council, as the actual decision-making body approves, like our five-year CIP plan, that we still have the ability to shift as needed during the year as issues occur? And we're not, I guess, violating something that the, that the, this advisory commission wanted or expected, and we're having to explain what we did or didn't do, as long as we end up spending the money, measure R, in CIP, in streets or in trails, and they can definitely say, after the audit's done, no, they spent it where it was, it just shifted in where the project went, that we're not going to get crosshairs in, well, the staff's not doing what we told them to do, and council didn't override it. And do we have to bring it back if I want to do something different with that money, or, or use money from this project to this one, because it turns out it costs more? So I'm just trying to make sure that we're not, I'm, I'm just trying to make sure that in the end, I know Brian and I is going to come forward with really good explanations of what we want to do, why we want to do it, and, and our rationale for it, but are they really intended to approve the project specifically, or really the money that we need to get that amount of work done? And that's what you're really considering, is, is that, yes, they do support parks getting a million and a half dollars to do this work, streets and trails to get this much of this work, and policing and fire. So I'm just trying to make sure I understand, as far as, after it's approved, my flexibility during the year of changing something, do we have to come back to council to shift something, or do I have to go back to that commission to shift something, and how we recognize that money's used in somewhere differently now?
If I, if I can, madam mayor, and maybe, maybe you'll agree with this, Ted, and maybe Corinne, because you were there for all those meetings, and when they first started, there was a lot of distrust and a lot of confusion, but as Brian and people really began to explain how the process, what I meant, there's a learning curve that's really severe. Once people understood how money has to shift, and the county interplay, and they delay a year, once they began to understand how the process really worked, people, I think, became understanding. And you had a committee that was unanimously against any tax whatsoever that flipped by the end of it. And a lot of it was just, that's the learning curve that's so grueling, is you have to explain how things actually work. And I have great confidence in Brian, Brian did a great job, you are here for that, but Lori did a great job, and we had Dominic come in, and Andy was there. Do you agree, Andy?
Yes.
I, I think people will get it.
Right.
And I think that you'll be able to say, okay, we got to shift here. And once they understand why those shifts occur, I think it'll work.
Yeah, I think the answer to Chad's question is, even though it might sound like it's bureaucratic, the purpose is both approving the list of projects to move forward, as well as the allocation of the funds, okay? Is, is not different from what the city council does to some extent. If the cost for projects change, and again, this, this committee is going to be meeting frequently, and that will be something that they will, that will be brought to them, and they will make that allocation, provided there is funds available to be spent on, on those projects. If, again, the way this was sold is having the residents have input in, in the determination of projects that are, that are, that are undertaken here in the city, not just simply to say, out of the $4 million, we're going to allocate $2 million to streets, and we are going to allocate $1 million to, to parks, and $1 million to public safety. That's the, that's part of it, but it doesn't end there.
What I may add on that, Chad, and the one good thing about an oversight committee is not only do it before, but they can review it after. And if something wasn't correctly done, they can bring it back with the idea that, hey, you guys did this. And I think you, you did it quite often on this successor agency, there's approved, approved expenditures, and that were already done, but they approved it after, just to, because you do have change orders, so like anything else, things change, things come up. But this Oversight Committee will ensure that we didn't, hopefully, we'll pick and say, hey, we didn't put money in a little sludge fund over here for this and that. That's not what we want to do. We want to keep it as transparent as possible, that an emergency came up and you had to do that, or something came up and you had to, had a greater need. I think that's the whole point.
I'd like to bring up something, just looking into the future a little bit. There will be a moment of wonderful learning opportunity. We've got SB1 funds, we have street, the gas tax, we've got measure A, that will be in the measure R. There's going to be a moment where you're going to say, what's the best and highest use of these monies for this particular project? So that may be in front of the advisory committee, or in the budget process. So I can see us with a, another spreadsheet moment allocating. So that's a wonderful opportunity.
Just to add to Gina's comment, one of the things that I envision is, is that we may be looking, as we look at projects, and you look at a 20-year CIP, which is what the ad hoc committee did, and when you start to look at that, and as, for example, Prop 48, Prop 68, we may parlay money together to get, instead of taking 10 years to get a project done, you get three. Before, we didn't have money to match, or whatever, now we may have money to match, and now you can get a whole bunch of projects done in one, or combine a project to get, instead of piecemealing, which, which is something we're going to have to take that committee through an educational process. So that's, those are some of the opportunities that may be out there that we didn't have before, now that measure R has been approved.
Need a sheet of acronyms, and then the different...
Gina?
So even though, let's say, like, measure A funds aren't all that great, you, you could, are you saying you could have some blending of, like, measure R funds, measure A funds, to reach a certain objective?
There's MOE requirements, there, there, excuse me, there are requirements for, that we have to meet every year, in terms of how we spend our measure A and street, and gas tax funds. SB1 is different, we've got that allocated. But you can, you can definitely pick and choose to pick on the project, which funds are going where, and the highest and best use, based on how much you have available. And, so yes, you can, you can blend.
We currently blend all our funds right now, just to get a project done.
Well, I know we have to.
As far as measure A or SB1, we blend them.
Right.
And we would do the same thing with measure R, and we would clearly show how much money's going, of those reserve, of those resources are going to that project. We'll, we'll clearly show that, as we do now in the CIP, it shows that source, we'll show it now, the measure R as a source.
We'll have a new category, measure R now.
Okay.
On the CIP, got it. Thank you, Gina.
To override the recommendations, we agreed on a supermajority sample.
I don't want to do that. I'm nervous about a supermajority at the moment. We have a, maybe revisit that in a year.
I'd rather have a supermajority, and if it doesn't work out, we can go back to some, but it's not just us. It's down the road.
These are staff responsibilities with, with respect to measure R. Don't think there's anything here to change. We could add, yes. Hey, I think we're done.
Okay. Anything else? Counsel? So this is just provide direction to staff. So with that being said, before we take a break, we do have a recognition to get done, so if Councilman Hoffman and Commissioner Kahan can come to the podium.
They walked out.
Andy, what do you think? Are you happy?
Oh, I think it come out.
If you look back on your agendas near the beginning, under recognitions, we wanted to recognize the Betancourt family, and unfortunately, because they've got finals tomorrow, they ran out of time. I, measure R was very important, but it ran lengthy, so. Rachel Betancourt is here to represent the family, so come on up. I'm going to give you a quick introduction to the family, and understand why, why we've chosen. Ted is the chairman of the Veterans Committee, I'm the vice chair of the Veterans Committee, and you'll understand in a moment why we've asked the council to allow us to recognize the Betancorts. The Betancourt family's been residents of Norco since 2010. Rachel and David have four children, Mitchell, Georgie, Bethany, and Brianna. David works at Sarito's College, he's the coordinator of the Center for Teaching Excellence, and as the college band director. He travels internationally as an educational consultant, inspiring teachers and professors to increase their impact on student success. And he's not here this evening because he's in a conference in Chicago doing exactly those things. Mitchell, the eldest son, is now a freshman at Kansas State University, where he's majoring in music education. He plans to be a band director as well, and also looks forward to earning his doctorate degree in music. While he was at Norco High School, he was in every band class with Mr. Mora, and recognized as one of the best in his field by being accepted to the All Southern California Honor Band, the California All State Honor Band, and the prestigious Tournament of Roses honors Harold Trumpet Line, and received the Young Artist Award from the International Trumpeters Guild. Georgie, who is second in line to the throne, is a junior at Norco High School, he's got a 4.37 GPA. He stays busy with the marching band, jazz band, and symphonic band. He's also been recognized in the California All State Honor Band, and the Tournament of Roses Honor Band, and now has his sights on the 2019 California All Southern and All State Honor Band, and the World Class Drum and Bugle Corps Pacific Crest. Bethany is a freshman at Norco High School, and is heavily involved in the choirs and the color guard. You can find her every day after school at the high school, helping classmates, or working on improving her own singing, marching, twirling, throwing, and catching. Brianna, the youngest of the four, is an eighth grader at Norco Intermediate. Brianna is also a competitive swimmer, and has raced in the Junior Olympics for the past three years. Her nickname is Noodles in the swimming world, and you might want to keep your eyes open in the 2024 Olympics, hopefully you might see her competing. She's also, the reason why they were a little bit late tonight, was she was performing at the Norco Intermediate Concert, she plays the saxophone. Now, you ask who keeps all the, all this crazy family together, that would be Rachel. She's dubbed the CEO of Domestic Affairs. She's the glue that keeps the family going, and if there is a Betancourt at a Norco event, you will find her there, being the Uber mom, driving everybody around. But she is also an accomplished artist and a photographer, and finds time to complete restoration projects, as a, such as a 1951 Ford tractor and a 1969 Austin America. So that's a quick recap of the family. I got to know the Betancorts personally through the Boy Scouts. They were members of Norco Troop 33 for a few years, when Mitchell and Georgie were a little younger and first starting out. And what ended up happening was, six years ago, city council decided to make the Veterans Memorial a project, and that very next April, we decided... Memorial a project, and that very next April, we decided to officially recognize George Ingalls' Day in April of 2013. Long before we even broke ground at the memorial, we had our first George Ingalls' Day ceremony out here in the front of City Hall, and we needed someone to play taps, and we needed someone to sing. And I said, hey, I know this family in the Boy Scouts that are musically talented, and let's ask them. Well, for the last five and a half years, for Veterans Day, Memorial Day, George Ingalls' Day, Patriots' Day, 9/11, at the fire station, all sorts of different events, every time we need someone to sing the National Anthem, Bethany's been there. I call up, or I email, and I say, Mitchell and David, we need you to come play taps, we need you to play bugle. The answer is always yes. The answer is always, what time do we need to be there? And they're always there. And as a committee, we wanted to recognize that for the five and a half years since we started doing George Ingalls' Day, they've been at every event, they've played, they've sang. They're such a wonderfully talented musical family, athletic family, academic family, that we wanted to recognize them for their support of the community, for their dedication to always showing up and giving of their talents and their time to the community. So on behalf of the Veterans Committee, Ted would like to make this presentation.
Rachel, on behalf of the City of Norco, along with the George A. Ingalls Veterans Executive Committee, and all of our veterans, if you've been up there, and you've been to our ceremonies, it's unique, especially when both of them are playing the bugles over their assignments, it's do it. But the certificate of recognition, the City of Norco hereby recognizes the Betancourt family for their patriotic devotion to the George A. Ingalls Veterans Memorial Plaza, and the Norco community of service members and veterans. So Rachel, thank you very much, and your family. We really appreciate it. All right?
Okay, I'm definitely not one for public speaking. The rest of my family is very comfortable up here, but not me. But before my eldest son, Mitchell, had to take everybody else home so they could study, he left me a message that said, okay, please, Mom, let them know that I'm very grateful for letting me honor veterans of my hometown throughout the years, and for giving me the opportunity to help my community. I think, well, Mitchell said it, but we all feel the same. We feel very fortunate to be members of this community. And I know, as parents, my husband and I, we feel very, very grateful for being able to raise our kids here, because it's really, truly a wonderful place. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Stand in front, and then right up here. Cheryl, we've got a picture of us. All right. Hear that, Jeff? She says they'll continue.
Absolutely. We'll keep calling.
Thanks, Jeff.
All right. So counsel, what is your pleasure, a break, or push through the last two items on the agenda? Get done? All right. So we will go ahead and proceed on to item number 6A, ordinance number 1044, first reading. It's a request to amend Norco Municipal Code, Chapter 3.50, Western Riverside County Transportation Uniform Mitigation Fee Program to the calculation and collection of TUMF. Code Amendment 2018-07. Mr. King, you're up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. This is an ordinance that's been recommended by the Western Riverside Council of Governments' Directors Committee, Executive Committee. And what it is, currently, Norco is a member of the Western Riverside Council of Governments, jurisdiction agency, and collectively, the 18 cities, in that organization, in 2002, 2003, adopted a transportation uniform mitigation fee that was designed to pay for shortfalls in funding for the regional system of highways and arterials in Western Riverside County. When it was adopted, the system was set up whereby the city, the member cities would determine the details of a project description, and then based upon that project description, would determine the funds, collect the funds, and then transfer the funds to Archog. And in the current system, there is, at the end of the year, an audit wherein those funds are reviewed by Archog. And if there's a shortfall in those funds, the city is responsible for either getting those funds from the developer, or having to pay them themselves, which is, can be problematic. The, what's being proposed with this ordinance is that the calculation and collection of fees would be done by Archog, and then the confirmation of the receipt would be sent to both the developer and to the respective cities, and then the city could proceed with the issuance of building permits, once those were ready to be issued. In the staff report, it talks about a saving of staff time, and honestly, that's kind of an overstatement. There is a minimal amount of staff time that would be saved. Probably, I don't think it's more than an hour's worth of work a week that goes into the determination of project description and calculation of fees. But the biggest benefit to the city, as I indicated, is that if there's a mistake in the determination of a project description, and then Archog determines what the fee amount is, it's caught early on, and can be taken care of then, instead of having to wait until the end of the year for the audit to catch that correction, which puts the city in a difficult position. So the city looked at both options of staying with the current system, wherein the city calculates the fee, collects it, and transfers the fee to Archog, or the option that the executive committee recommended, wherein Archog would calculate the fee and collect it, and then give a confirmation of the receipt for those fees to the city, so that they could proceed with the issuance of the building permit. So with that, this ordinance would transfer that responsibility to Archog, and that process would probably begin April 1 of 2019. And with that, I will conclude my presentation and answer any questions.
All right. Do any of the council members have questions for Mr. King?
I have one. Gina, this is Chair Director, is this going to save your time and staff? I know Steve says it doesn't much save, but you're the one that handles the money, is this good for you?
Oh, definitely. It's maybe 15 minutes a week, or something like that. We really don't get that much on an ongoing basis. It's usually one big project at one time that comes through. As I jokingly told Andy, we'll be missing out on a month's worth of interest income on the money, because we would be taking it, so.
Oh, well, see...
But, not that much, because interest isn't that much, so. But no, from our perspective, it isn't that much of our time.
Yeah, I'll go back to you, Steve. This will keep us out of hot water, like some other cities got themselves into that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Jump over to school fees for a minute. I support what you're doing here, Steve. So you have a project which requires school fees, you send those, correct me, you send those, that applicant over to the school district, with his plans, they calculate it, they pay the fees, they bring you back a receipt.
Yeah, except that the city actually calculates the fees and sends it over to the school district, and they collect the fees.
So we're doing the school district's work for them?
Pretty much.
Yeah, and it's the same with this, that, I like the idea of, you go down to Riverside, W. Archog's office, have them calculate it, you pay it, and bring me back the receipt. We spend little time, we have no liability with it. My only concern is that, it says here, that building counterstaff will do the calc's, and figure out the TUMF fees.
That's the way we currently do it. If the council agrees to adopt the ordinance, what would change is, the city staff would still be required to give a project description to Archog.
So we'll still do the calc's?
Not the calc's, the project description, and then Archog would do the calculation of the fees, based upon our project description.
Prose says here, building counterstaff to electronically complete TUMF calculation worksheets.
Yeah, and the worksheet is the project description.
So, calculation meant calculation to me. That's all.
Yeah. But Archog would do the fee calculation.
I'm trying to, I'm fine with it. I think it should be a lot easier, but it's not even handle the money. Send them down to Riverside, go pay your fees. And we should be doing the same with the school district. Both these guys reap all the rewards, they're big-ticket items, let them do some of the work.
I agree.
Okay.
So we had an incident where a business we all know and love was miscategorized. And she came unglued and said, $85,000, and it was miscategorized, and Andy got involved, everybody got involved, and what was it, $3,000 for some tiny amount?
Correct.
She had to pay, she had to pay money. I just don't, it was like, almost nothing. How do we make sure that doesn't, and I'm not W. Archog rep.
Right.
I'm really not in favor of this, but it's the wave of the future, I'm willing to give it a chance. What happens if it gets miscategorized? Does the person have to drive down to Riverside, or do they come to us and say, gee, what happened?
Their appeal, I'll give two scenarios. Currently, what would happen is the appeal would go through the city, and then we'd go to Archog with the appeal.
And we all stood at the counter that day, and we called W. Archog right then, and then the person, by the minute, by the time they walked out, they knew their fees were less than what they, the mistake.
Right. And if this gets adopted by the council, the change would be that the appeal would go directly to Archog.
So they got to drive over to Riverside, they got to talk to maybe somebody they don't know, or would they have the opportunity to get assistance from their local municipality?
We'd definitely help them. Yes.
I have reservations about this, but, I mean, I just, we're losing some of the service to our residents, and that was really an eye-opener, when that amount went from $85,000 to, and it was just a mistake. That's all.
All right.
I'm part of this, because I sat there at RCTC when they all hit the fan with Beaumont, and at $40 million, they hadn't paid TUMF fees. And a lot of those people went to jail. And then that surprised me two or three years later, that we were having an incident at Lake Elsinore, over that exchange down there, about a bunch of TUMF fees, but they got that straightened out. So I think it's a good deal that W. Archog's going to handle it, and they can be responsible for hunting the money, instead of people in the city hiding it and everything.
All right, this is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing. Are there any cards?
No cards on this item.
I will close the public hearing, and bring it back to council for action.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Norco approving code amendment 2018-07 to include a process for Western Riverside Council of Governments, W. Archog, calculation and collection of fees under the transportation uniform mitigation fee TUMF program.
Please vote on this item.
Okay. Item 6B, ordinance number 1045, first reading, amending Norco Municipal Code, Chapter 6.42, municipal refuse collection service, and deleting Chapter 6.45, City of Norco manure management and disposal. Code Amendment 2018-08. And Chad, this is yours.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So this item is being brought forward specifically because the state, over the last decade, has opted multiple rules through AB 341 and 1826, that mandates and phases in mandatory recycling for commercial and multifamily residences. We've been working with CalRecycle over the last 18 months or so, because they've been systematically evaluating our participation rates since these assembly bills have been adopted, and have come to note that we have very low participation from our commercial customers, both in the quantity of commercial customers we have, and in the amount of material that's being recycled. And they proactively allowed us to get our program more up to speed. We don't have an actual ordinance that applies and provides direction regarding how commercial and multifamily properties must participate and meet state guidelines. Even though these are state guidelines and rules, the state has made it very clear that it is Norco's responsibility as a local municipality, that we are to govern that, and to make sure that our commercial customers are in compliance. If we don't, then they will have findings against us, and cite us for being in non-compliance. They have not, and that's the first report, given specific quotas that we're supposed to reach, or quantities that we're supposed to achieve. The regulations are specifically left kind of vague in that regard, so, because even times we're asked, so what's my target, what am I trying to achieve, they won't give you one. They'll simply point out, is that based off your numbers, you're not doing enough. And that's enough, in their minds, to give you basically a finding against the city. So we've spent the last year, you know, working with them, proactively getting more information out, and using waste management assistance, doing a lot of flyers, informational flyers directly to businesses, phone calls to businesses, offering surveys, you know, getting an idea of really where they stand in their recycling, what type of processes they have, and using the data we have currently about their level of service, determining if they're a potential entity for recycling. And when we talk about recycling, there's two, for the last, you know, six to eight years, it's really been about the traditional cycle we all think about, which is the cardboard, the cans, metal, et cetera, plastics. But now, it also includes organics, which really affects the, which is basically the food-grade waste that you get from the restaurants, the fast food stores, restaurants, et cetera, and they also have to be recycled. So in order, we found that over the last year, we weren't getting a lot, any more really participation or interest in our surveys, or getting containers, it was still remaining very low, and CalRecycle was pointed out to us. So we determined that really the only effective way we're going to get, despite educating them, the flyers, that it's a state law, state requirement, and they could get fined, is that we had to adopt our own ordinance, and start doing our own compliance. And that's basically what CalRecycle has been looking for, and this is that next step. And what we did was, is develop an ordinance that outlined specifically the types of recycling that's looked for, the acronyms, abbreviations, which would be very detailed, we used other agencies, and in recent ordinances, they adopted, so we didn't create it on our own. We did give it to the state to review, and they approve of our ordinance that we developed. As I developed the ordinance and put it together, we also looked at the existing sections of our municipal code. We have two existing sections, one dealing with actual refuse, which is 6.42, and then we have a specialized, specific section of municipal code that deals with manure, which is 6.45. We made the choice to really have an effective ordinance, in my opinion, in working with the city manager, is basically to combine them all together, to make it a fluid document that staff can go through and find any information when it comes to trash services in one document, rather than going to specific sections. So it was kind of a housekeeping opportunity to bring everything together. There were some small sections in each of the existing municipal codes that were kind of old and outdated, so we eliminated. And so it's now a more and more comprehensive ordinance. It includes, again, penalties and actions that the city can take for non-compliance for our existing municipal code that allows for administrative fines. And again, part of this is to point out that we felt there was a nester, because as much as Waste Management was trying to communicate this issue through their flyers, they won't get much response. And now, we're going to switch to really the city doing a lot more of the flyers, more of the outreach, so that these commercial businesses understand that this is the city indicating that you need to help us come into compliance, and we're going to be there to participate with that. But this is that first step, so once we have an ordinance codified that explains and clearly it shows our commercial customers that this is an actual ordinance, it has to be complied with, it's not a state rule... have to comply. We're going to try to work, and our next plan with CalRecycle that they have basically endorsed, is that we'll start a progressive process, going out to our highest customers as far as service, work with them to get understanding of their level of service, finding out how we can accommodate them. Because there are exceptions in this ordinance by the state code that allows them to not recycle, meaning if they, even though if they have four cubic yards of service, but they don't have space to put another cart or bin, then that can be an exception that the city can identify and document, and we do our annual reporting, we can explain why certain number of businesses don't, even though they meet the four cubic yard threshold, they're not being required to do it because they meet these certain criteria that the state has outlined. So we have to do a lot more work after this gets adopted in developing our outreach and working with the businesses, determine what their needs really are. Can we modify the way they currently handle their trash waste so that maybe they can get under the requirement and not see a potential impact? Because there is potential impact to this. For some businesses, they will have multiple bins now, or additional carts. And so there will be an additional cost for them. We're going to try to see what we can do to help avoid that or minimize that as best we can. So that's why we want to have really one-on-one understanding of each business and what, how they currently operate, clearly understand their restrictions on a property, and so that we can defend what our ultimate decision is on that commercial customer of how they need to proceed. And this also includes multifamily. They also need to recycle, and that's a big change for a lot of multifamily residents. They're not used to that. They're used to one bin, because most residents come out with their one trash can from an apartment or a condo. So we're going to have to work with those folks and try to maybe find alternate trashcans that we can provide to the residents in those commercial apartments or condos, so that they can filter through their own trash and take it to the right trashcan. So there's a lot of expectations from the state that we're supposed to be doing more. This is that first step, and they're really happy to see that, that we're codifying it. And then they're going to continue to monitor us and watch us over the next 12 months. So we're doing a lot of work with Waste Management and ourselves, trying to figure out how we best start this process out and to do that outreach, but we'll probably logically start with our largest customers first and then work down, so that we can make sure that we're, you know, trying to be as efficient as we can to show the state that we're making progress on getting our commercial customers into compliance with effectively state rules, but will now be city rules also. So we're just matching that. So on behalf of the answer, questions you have regarding the ordinance? And I appreciate the opportunity.
Council, have any questions?
I have one, Chad. Actually, two. Enforcement, under 320, the last section, the city manager is the designee. Who is the designee? Javier?
Code enforcement.
Code enforcement, okay. All right. So your crews would, okay. All right. Then the second thing, penalties, violations and penalties. And I know you're going to go through a timeframe of warnings and trying to get compliance, but what are we talking about penalty-wise?
It's the same penalties at this time, it's in the municipal code, so it's usually $100 for first violation.
A violation of this is a violation of the code, and it goes back to the penalty section and section.
Okay, so it doesn't list dollar amount in this code. I know it refers back to the initial code, that's what I was just asking. So they could be fined anywhere from $100 to $500 depending on rec. Okay, that's just what I was asking. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I know this is primarily, your emphasis is on the commercial recycling participation, but just one thing, a couple things that jumped out at me was with construction and construction demolition waste, do we require diversion reports on construction demolition? And are those predicated on before you get a certificate of occupancy?
In the current ordinance, it doesn't require it, and that's what this ordinance now adds in specifically. You actually have to submit a waste plan to Public Works to approve, how you plan to handle the C and D material, where it's going to go, et cetera. Once we approve that, then they can get their actual permit to do that work, and then we follow up to make sure that they met compliance. They have to return and submit those tickets back that delivered it to those locations. And there's a potential of also requiring them to have the deposit that is really a stick to make sure they do comply. So they could say, hey, you have to put a deposit of $500, $1,000, and then that's what we give back, make sure that they actually follow through with that.
This will allow us that, before your certificate of occupancy, that you have to submit diversion reports?
And that's something we'll have to coordinate with building and planning. We just wanted to make sure that before they started that demolition or rehab, that we at least reviewed their plan to handle the waste. We haven't really discussed how the certificate of occupancy may or may not be given. It seems logical to not do it until that's been submitted, but that's really...
We actually condition projects, they have to submit their diversion plan before they can be issued a building permit. So all of their, all of their construction and demolition waste, they have to have a plan in place, and that includes a monthly report that they are complying with that.
Okay. I mean, we're doing much better with projects requiring, to use our franchise hauler, okay, which tracks that tonnage, but those two should work together with creating the diversion report, which, I guess what I'm getting at is you're never going to satisfy the state, okay? They're looking to be, you should be at 100% diversion, which will never happen, but they will be requiring that. So, thanks.
Any other questions from council? This is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing. Any cards?
No cards.
No cards. I will close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Norco amending Norco Municipal Code, Chapter 6.42, Municipal Refuse Collection Service, renaming Chapter 6.42 to Municipal Refuse, Manure and Recycling Collection, and deleting Chapter 6.45, City of Norco Manure Management and Disposal. Code Amendment 2018-08.
Please vote on this item. Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. That takes us to item number seven, City Council, City Manager and Staff Communications. We will start with Mr. Petrie.
I would just like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Gina?
Same, Merry Christmas.
Same from Chief Lane and I, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to all.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas to all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Same, just remember, we are the power.
Same here, Merry Christmas to everyone.
All right. Kevin?
One of the things I want to agendize, probably in February, is I want to visit norms for commissioners. I'd like to look at the expectations that we should have of them and the use of social media, things like that. I would like to agendize that.
Mr. Newton?
Merry Christmas.
All right, Cheryl?
Nothing to report.
Chad?
First Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays. Hopefully, I'm not shinxing myself, but the contractor should be out there on Hamner right now, starting to grind between third and fourth. That should be done and paved by the end of Saturday night. So we should have a nice road into this week.
Mr. King? All right, thank you, everyone. With that, I will adjourn the meeting.